Good evening. It is now 7:05 on February 8, 2023. I would like to reconvene the City Council's successful agency to the Westminster Redevelopment Agency Meeting. Call to the other. For call please.
Thank you, Mayor Nguyen.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Fan West.
Here.
Councilmember Monzo.
I'm here.
And Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next we have the salute to the flag. Will be led by Councilmember Carlos Manzol and then invocation by City Attorney Benton House.
Please stand.
This is your Henry Park. By Henry Park, reading begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we humbly come before you this evening and we ask that you would help the city, help the council, help staff, the public to be attentive and to, as we deal with these city business items, we ask that you grant us wisdom. We ask that, in particular, we pray for the people of Turkey that are in Syria that are dealing with the impacts of the earthquake. We ask that you be with them and their families and help the rescuers in their efforts. Let me commit this evening to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Carlos Manzol and City Attorney Benton House. Next, I'd like to call for the City Attorney Close Session Report.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two items listed on the agenda. We actually only discussed one. It was one item of anticipated litigation. It does indicate potential anticipated is the appropriate entry. Please, quiet. So there's nothing further to report?
Thank you. Exporte Communications, if you have any.
No.
Hearing them, so we go into City Clerk Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of announcements. One being, there are some corrections to be made on the minutes, which is currently on your consent calendar. One of those being on page seven of the minutes from January 25. And there was a couple of inadvertent typos, misstold names. And the other one being on page 13 of January 30 meeting that the maker of the motion and the second were transposed. So we've made those corrections as well. And those have been updated and placed on the website. And then also, we would like to continue to invite the community to please, if you're interested in any of the commissions, boards, and committees, to please visit our website. The application is up on there. It is a fillable form. And we encourage everyone to, who is interested in participating to the city, to please apply. We do have QR codes, as you can see, listed throughout that will help you, if you have your cellphone, that you can link immediately onto that webpage. And Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. City Manager, will you please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The report is coming right now. Apologize for that. So, as you know, our Police Department's Honor Guard was invited to perform at the Collegiate Bowl prior to the kickoff on Saturday, January 28. And this was played over at the Rose Bowl in Pasadena, featured the top college senior football players from this past season. The game was televised on ESPN and the Honor Guard was very professional in the way they represented our city and the police department. Currently, you see on the screen, we want to thank the Westminster PD Honor Guard for proudly representing our city at this event. So, thank you. And then this Friday, so this Friday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, that's February 10th, over at the Community Services Building at 8200 Westminster Boulevard, that's out in the front on Westminster, will be hosting an intake day to distribute gift cards for the grocery assistance program. I know quite a few people have been asking about that program. So to be eligible to receive a $100 gift card while supplies last, you must be a resident of the city, be over the age of 55, or a veteran, have receipts that total at least $100 pre-tax from a store, grocery store in Westminster that sells groceries, and you must have not already received this during the first round of distribution. So we will be having a full-on intake day. Proof of residency and age or veteran status is required. We ask that you do not line up before 9:45 AM and in order to be served, you must be in line by 2:00 PM. We do expect that there will be long wait times, but we will have a waiting area indoors for you to wait comfortably as well. And we will have a few groups, a few tents and groups out there with some of our local partners so that you have a little bit of something to do as you're waiting as well. So that's happening this, that is happening this Friday. And with that, I have nothing else to report.
All right, thank you.
May I ask a question regarding that?
Go ahead.
I have a constituent who asked me, I think according to our website, the receipt, I think it has to be dated within a range and it was like November to December. What is it now or is it the same?
So, did it get updated on the website?
November 21st, '22.
Yes, so it's-
12/31/22.
So it should have been updated, but it's still the same starting date, but you can still get receipts at this point. Yes, up till now.
All right, thank you.
All right, next is oral communication. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding any items on the agenda or non-agenda items that are within the subject matters jurisdiction, except public hearing items. There is one public items today. So members of the public wishing to address public hearing item shall do so at the time of the public hearing. Unless otherwise extended by the majority vote of the City Council, comments shall be limited to the three or five minutes per speaker. We'll determine that. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person should complete a greeting speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the City Clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and stick your name and the CD of residence optional for the record. Any person wishing to address the City Council via Zoom should press the raise your hand button. If you are using a telephone and have a dial-in, press nine. Before I open up for the oral communication, once again, please allow me to address some of the housekeeping items. First of all, we, the council, would like to hear all your inputs. You are welcome to criticize the performance that you see, you know, from the council. But please refrain from personal attack. I'm sure that you would agree with me that bullying, harassment, and intimidation at public meetings are absolutely unacceptable. Also, please refrain profanity language. As you know, this meeting is live via City Channel 3. And also, we have kids from school. You know, I got a feedback that we have kids from school watching the meeting so that they can get extra credit. So, you know, I would ask you to, you know, use the proper language so that, you know, we don't intimidate the people who doesn't want to hear, you know, the profanity. At this point, I would like to ask the Madam Clerk, would you please kindly let us know how many people are signed up to speak tonight?
There are 12 and currently, two hands are currently raised on Zoom at this time.
Okay. From what I have noticed last time, we have around 12 to 15 people at the time that we started the oral communication. And it took like three hours to get the oral communication done. So I don't know that this meeting might be the same and that the council have the city business to do. So with that, I would like to ask for three minutes to reduce from five minutes to three minutes, if I have a second.
I second it.
We have a motion to to reduce the time, speaker time, from the five minute to three minutes and we have the second.
Thank you, Mayor. That motion was made by Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilwoman Fan West, and that is to have all communications be three minutes. Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
No.
Councilmember Ho?
May I ask how many? I'm sorry, I know you might have said it earlier, but how many speakers for today?
Fifteen, right?
Twelve in person and three on Zoom at this time.
That's not reasonable to reduce, to ask to reduce time like that. So I vote no.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right. At this point here, I would like to open up for the oral communication, so.
The first speaker at this time is Nguyen Hung.
Good evening. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen. Today, we start with the theme, "We want Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen and his fellow citizens to be proud of their country." Please stand up.
Good evening. Tonight, to start out, I'm going to ask that Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen and Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen, for the sake and the honor of the Vietnamese community, please resign.
Good evening. I'm standing here as Mr. Nguyen Hong, in the 4th District of California, 92683. Today, I'm standing here to ask two citizens, Charlie Ching Nguyen and Nguyen Nam Quan, to be proud of their country.
I, the undersigned Hung Nguyen, a resident of District 4 of the City of Westminster, I'm writing this letter today to ask Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen and Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen to resign. Out of your self-respect, please resign at the earliest time possible.
On January 31st, 2023, I sent to the City Manager and all of you, as well as 12 other state and local tax authority and legal authority. I will not discuss those matters today, but I have two things that I would like to oppose today. Those are the two items on tonight's agenda. That is, 5.5 and 5.6. The reasons are that Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen and City Councilwoman Emmy Fan West both sponsored those two proposals or agenda. I think the reason for this is that Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen and City Councilwoman Emmy Fan West both sponsored those two proposals or agenda. I think the reason for this is that Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen and City Councilwoman Emmy Fan West both sponsored those two proposals or agenda. I think the reason for this is that Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen and City Councilwoman Emmy Fan West both sponsored those two proposals or agenda. In my opinion, the reasons is that Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen and City Councilwoman Emmy Fan West both sponsored those two proposals or agenda. I think the reason for this is that Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen and City Councilwoman Emmy Fan West both sponsored those two proposals or agenda. I think the reason for this is that Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen and City Councilwoman Emmy Fan West both sponsored those two proposals or agenda. So does this confirm public opinion that the two of you, instead of serving the residents, you just form a gang to manipulate? Yeah, please see the sign holding up by our resident Terry Rains saying Gang of Three. This is what the official statement said during the first meeting when the candidate was a person with poor English and poor management skills. And he was a YouTuber using videos to deceive the citizens of Nam Quan Nguyen into becoming Mayor. And this was demonstrated during the first meeting. When you nominate a person who lacks the ability to speak English, who have no administrative experience as Vice Mayor. During the following meeting, Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen reduced the speaking time from five to three minutes by cutting off the speaking time from five to three minutes with the yes vote by the Gang of Three. After the meeting, Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen cut up the speaking time from five to three minutes with the yes vote by the Gang of Three. After the meeting, Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen continued to use YouTube channels to attack the citizens of Nam Quan Nguyen. And Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen, after that meeting on January 25th, 2023, he still go on his YouTube channel to attack, to fabricate, and slander those who criticize him. I collected the YouTube videos of the YouTube media of Nam Quan Nguyen to prove if necessary. I have collected evidence on my computer of those YouTube clips from trust media to be used if needed in court. I think the purpose of the Gang of Three is to keep the citizens of Nam Quan Nguyen to deceive, to attack, and use traditional means to do actions like what we usually do without the need to sue the citizens. A public protest by the media is a countermeasure. Are you through Agenda Item 5.5 and 5.6 helping to pave the way for Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen to continue to attack, to humiliate, and to slander people via the media without being sanctioned? I think the purpose of the Gang of Three is to convince the citizens of Nam Quan Nguyen to stop the protest. If this is the first time, the citizens should be convinced that the protest is wrong. Have you seen the video? On January 1st, 2023, Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen reduced the protest to five minutes. Then he stopped the protest to deceive the citizens of Nam Quan Nguyen. Regarding Item 5.6, I suggest that Mayor Charlie Ching Nguyen abstain from voting because it's paradoxical and it's ridiculous for someone to vote on something that he proposed. If you have a crime victim, if you have a criminal, and can he vote to say that he's not guilty?
Thumbs up. The next speaker is Tom-
We have only three minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, we just spent.
The next speaker, excuse me.
Please.
The next speaker is-
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Tom Lam, followed by Candy Deng. Tom Lam?
First of all, I would like to send my greeting to the City Council of the City of Westminster.
Mayor, may I just interrupt real briefly? Audience, we're conducting a meeting here and you need to remain quiet. If you have conversations, you can go outside.
If you have conversations, you can go outside. If you have conversations, you can go outside. I would like to say something. I would like to say something. On April 14th, 2023, there was a person named Chung. I would like to say something. I would like to say something. First of all, I have these things here. On January 14th, I was assaulted by a person here. His name is Chung. And so I respectfully ask the police officer and the City Council to remove him from this meeting.
Please continue with you.
My name is Tom Lam. I'm a resident of the City of Westminster. I'm writing this letter to the City Council about these issues that I have. I'm writing this letter to the City Council about these issues that I have. Just like Mr. Hung Nguyen, I have issues with Agenda Item 5.5 and 5.6. I think the purpose of the Gang of Three is to convince the citizens of Nam Quan Nguyen to stop the protest. They have a group of three consisting of Charlie Ching Nguyen, Nam Quan Nguyen, and Emmy Fan West. They did not even try to hide their the plot here, trying to use the three to five vote, or three out of five vote to manipulate the city for their own benefit of the benefit of their group. The Gang of Three announced publicly the election in August, 2021. On that day, they voted for a person with poor English and poor management skills. And he was a YouTuber to deceive the citizens of Nam Quan Nguyen into becoming Mayor. So this Gang of Three publicly celebrated their victory at the end of November. During that meeting, they immediately nominate a person who is, who English is limited, lack of experience, administrative experience, and also a YouTuber who slander and defame the residents who disagree with him, and that would be Nam Quan Nguyen, to be the Vice Mayor. Mr. Nguyen, since I knew about the California public protest in Santa Ana, number 19300832, because Mr. Nguyen sent it out to the public, I feel uncomfortable every time he announces his name in this protest. With respect to Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen, I know that, I know from the restraining order in case number 19P000832 sent out by Mr. Hung Nguyen, I didn't feel safe when I addressed the council and expressed my opinion in front of the City Council here. According to the public protest, Mr. Nguyen has a prior conviction for carrying illegal weapon. And so I'm concerned that one of these day, he might go insane and got his gun, bring his gun in here and just spray his bullet on people. I want the city to check if Mr. Nguyen is allowed to carry weapons. According to the restraining order, Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen has a prior conviction for carrying illegal weapon. And so I'm concerned that one of these day, he might go insane and got his gun, bring his gun in here and just spray his bullet on people. I want the city to check if Mr. Nguyen is allowed to carry weapons. Because according to the public protest, Mr. Nguyen is a dangerous person. He threatened his wife and kid. So with respect to us, we mean nothing to him. I'm asking our police chief to double-check and to withdraw the license to carry firearm if Nam Quan Nguyen has such a thing. And because, because according to the restraining order, Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen is forever prohibited from carrying a gun because he's a dangerous person. He threatened his wife and kid. So with respect to us, we mean nothing to him. Outside of that, Mr. Nguyen has been a terrorist since 1931. I was a civilian from 1975. So I don't dare, I feel uncomfortable. It's typical today when the person who voted for 14th April 1st is Mr. Nguyen.
Time's up. Sorry, time's up. The next-
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Candy Deng, followed by Tree Lam.
Yeah, it's my husband. Okay. Candy, hello everyone. I'm here to represent all the women and men in the United States of America.
Good evening to all of you in this room and all of you watching on the media. My name is Candy.
I'm here to represent all the women and men in the United States of America and all the men and women in the world who are struggling with the situation of new Westminster council members. First, I want to say that Mr. Nguyen should not leave his chair for too long, more than 10 minutes, like he did before other meetings when people are reflecting on him. He should not leave his chair for too long, more than 10 minutes, like he did before other meetings when people are reflecting on him. He should not leave his chair for too long, more than 10 minutes, like he did before other meetings when people are reflecting on him. He should not leave his chair for too long, more than 10 minutes, like he did before other meetings when people are reflecting on him.
The attitude of walking away and laughing arrogantly, drinking water constantly like a long-term starving person is so unprofessional and shows that you look down on the speakers. So don't blame us that we look down on you.
Mr. Nguyen, the citizens of Nam Quan Nguyen are our friends and we want to help the public and support the city. He is the founder of the company. He is the founder of the company. He is the founder of the company. He is the founder of the company.
Nam Quan, people voted for you to help the community and develop the city. It's not every day that you go to your own YouTube channel with Nguyen Tinh Dũng to call for the money from a fellow countryman to save a bunch of criminals in Vietnam.
He is the founder of the company. 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 He is the founder of the company.
Also, at the meeting, when people questioned you, you kept your mouth shut. After the meeting, you went to your own YouTube channel and scolded us, saying we were jumping monkeys. Take a look at yourself, you are a monkey.
He is always on the street as a Mayor. He is the founder of the company. He is the founder of the company.
You always go out representing as a Vice Mayor to defend people who oppose you. So why do you keep your mouth shut and play the role of innocent person at this meeting?
As you see, Mr. Nguyen, Nam Quan Nguyen, and Emmy Fan West have been the citizens of Nam Quan Nguyen in every protest.
As you can see, the mayor, the Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Emmy was criticized by many ethnicities at most every meeting.
So I wonder why three of you have not resigned but are still sitting here with a blank face while getting scolded by many speakers? I wonder why you are always on the street and scolding people?
So I wonder why until now, three of you have not resigned but are still sitting here with a blank face while getting scolded by many speakers?
I wonder why you are always on the street and scolding people? I think you are trying to form a Gang of Three as some of us saying about you, promoting each other to get this position? Is it for the community purpose and want to develop the City of Westminster or for personal purpose? I think you are more clear about this. 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 Nghe chửi mỗi hai tuần về tư cách, đạo đức, năng lực để quý vị đạt được mục đích gì?
I think the above question, you know the answer better than anyone else. Getting scolded by every two weeks about your character, morality, ability, to achieve what purpose?
Yes, nếu quý vị muốn phát triển thành phố phồng vinh, người dân được ấm no sung túc thì thượng đế không sắp đặt cho những người dân chúng tôi đứng ra và trờ những điều xấu xa mà quý vị đang cố gắng dùng hai tay, hai chân của mình để che đậy.
If you want to develop the proper city, proper citizen, then God would not arrange so many people like us to stand out and expose the evils that you are trying to cover.
Tôi biết đối đầu với pháp luật với quý vị để giành lại sự công bằng, trung thực cho các xã hội và đặc biệt là thành phố Westminster này với ba vị là đều rất khó cho một người phụ nữ như tôi và những người dân mà đã từng lên tiếng.
I know that fighting with the law to regain fairness and honesty for society and Westminster city against three of you is very difficult for a woman like me and other people who condemn you.
Nhưng chúng tôi sẽ không từ bỏ cho đến khi quý vị từ chức hoặc bị phế chức bởi sự, bởi sự thất tỉnh của cộng đồng khi hiểu được sự xấu xa băng đản của ba người.
But we will not give up, give up until you resign or are removed by the awakening of the community to understand the evil, the gang of three.
Vì chúng tôi biết, để biết được quý vị được ngồi cái vị trí này thì quý vị đã khổ nhọc, toàn tính đấu đá khủng khiếp biết bao nhiêu đúng không?
Because we know how hard it was for you to sit on this position.
Yeah, Charlie Chi Nguyễn, nếu ông tiếp tục bè phái, bao chê cho những người thuộc hạ với ông, lỏng Nam Quan Nguyễn thì tôi tin rằng pháp luật và luật trời sẽ không tha thứ cho ông.
Charlie Chi Nguyễn, if you continue to cling aka the gang of three and cover for your support of Nam Quan Nguyễn, then I believe the American law and God's law will let you pay the right price.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
The next speaker. The next speaker is Michael Verenja, followed by Kim Springer.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank council member Manzo and council member Ho for sticking up for our First Amendment rights. You weather three, you're cowards. There was only twelve people that wanted to speak to the council and you chickened out. Of course, I'm not really surprised at that. Ms. Phan West, I'm having a little problem here with your council training and some of your comments. Apparently, at the last meeting, you got so upset that you were on the verge of tears and you made a comment that you represent the Vietnamese people. If I was a council member and said I represented the white people, what do you think that would happen? I'd be called a racist. Your comment is pretty much borderline racist. What about all the people in the first district that are white, black, Hispanic, Korean, Chinese, Native American? And you just basically spit in their face. Also, you had to learn that it was illegal to take a bribe. I would have thought that at your age, you'd have figured that one out even without your training. Also, I understand you have a little trouble paying attention here sometimes in the city council meetings because I sit there and watch you kind of daydreaming, maybe looking down at your phone, maybe kind of turning your head because you're not interested in what's going on up front here. I guess if I had people mad at me because of my performance, I could understand it. Also, you and Charlie apparently can't figure out that you're supposed to keep your monitor on, on the Zoom meetings. I'm sorry, not Charlie, Mr. Nam Quan here. You have to keep your monitor on, on Zoom meetings, otherwise how's anybody gonna know that you're paying attention? I guess you could flick it off and go back, you know, walk out, go mow your lawn, come back in while they're droning on and nobody would ever know. That's why you keep your monitor on. Okay, getting off of this here, you've got a couple items here, 5.5 and 5.6. You want to rescind the censure of Charlie Nguyen and also Trytah. Why? That's old news. There's no reason to rescind those. They were censured for a reason. The last city council censured them because of their comments and their behavior up here. That's why they were censured. There's no reason to rescind those. Let them take their lumps and let them learn from it. If they don't learn from it, they'll get censured again, not, not by this council. I don't think Van Tran will allow the three of you to do that stuff. Everybody knows you're all his lackeys. Also, whoa, that was quick, wasn't it? Thanks for sticking up for my First Amendment rights, you two. I do appreciate it. Rest of you are cowards.
The next speaker is Kim Springer. Followed by Daniel Tran.
Mayor.
I can't hear you.
I just say good evening, mayor and council. My name is Kim Springer and I live in District One off of Westminster and Edwards behind the bowling alley shopping center. I'd like to address you, Amy, directly as you represent my district. The last council meeting, I observed the passion that you have for the Vietnamese community and I admire that. I truly do. I want you to have that same passion for the people in District One, same exact passion. We need that. Would you be willing to meet up once a quarter and meet with District One and brainstorm and figure out the things that our district needs to move us along in a positive way? I welcome any of you guys to do that. Charlie's dad lives in my neighborhood. I'm a co-captain for Neighborhood Watch program and we've worked very hard over the past year along with the amazing support of the police department to make our neighborhood safe. Now we have big lots closing and we've had an influx of homeless individuals sleeping all around the facility. We have our own set of problems, the homelessness issues, which brings in theft and other crimes, big lots and the Westminster cafe closing. How are you going to incentivize any new business to occupy that center when they can visually see the homeless hanging out there? I was on the Nextdoor app and Susie Swanson posted, I don't know if you guys saw this, the area near Westminster Boulevard at Edwards has become so bad. I have a kid who doesn't want to walk to school, wait at the bus stop, or even ride a bike around. It's not safe. She doesn't feel safe anymore. Yesterday, as I'm driving from work to get her, she sends a video of a screaming guy with his pants falling down. As she left, she called me panicking because there were two other transient types following her from school or following her. She crossed multiple streets to get away and they kept following her. This was all within ten minutes. This, she wouldn't get up and go to school today because she didn't want to walk. This mom is concerned. This is in District One. This is just one example of the seriousness of what is happening in our neighborhoods. More attention needs to be given to this matter before something serious happens to childrens or families in District One as well as the rest of the city. This is the time that I encourage each of you to come together as one unit to make Westminster vibrant and a safe place to live and shop. I hope you guys can do that.
The next speaker is Daniel Tran, followed by Tony Wong.
Xin chào tất cả quý vị. Tôi cần một người translate.
Good evening. I would be the decision of a translator, interpreter.
Vâng và tôi là một công dân của thành phố Westminster.
I am a resident of the city of Westminster.
Và những ngày qua tôi rất lấy làm xấu hổ khi mà những người nói tiếng Việt đã đứng trên này để nói những điều vu cáo, mạ lệ và rất là vô giáo dục.
For the past few days, I became ashamed because there would be people standing up here or hurling all accusations and defending and defamation.
Yeah, vâng và quý vị đã thấy rồi qua những người lên nói trước đây, đặc biệt là cái cô áo hồng ngồi phía sau thật sự làm cho công thù xấu hổ bởi vì những cái hình ảnh này sẽ lan truyền trên toàn thế giới.
And as you, I use, as you can see.
Please, let him, I did interrupt you, please. We have the meeting in order, please.
As you can see, the speaker that went before me, especially the woman in the pink.
Can you stop? Can you stop, please? It's my time. It's my time right now. Sorry. It's my time. We need to get the meeting going because we have city business to take care of. So if you need to talk among yourselves, I invite you to come out. You go outside and talk about it, you know, and then when you finish, come back. You, we are welcome, you know, like, we already respect you as, we ask you to respect the other. Okay, go ahead and start now.
Và tôi là một người rất là tôn trọng hiến pháp Hoa Kỳ.
I'm a person who respects the US Constitution.
Tôi tôn trọng những lá phiếu của những người dân.
And I respect the vote by the people.
Và tôi tôn trọng tất cả những người ứng cử và trúng cử được bầu bởi những người dân đang ngồi ở phía trên này.
All the candidate as, as well as people who were successfully campaigned and got elected, people sitting up here right now.
Tôi sẽ cho quý vị trên này có một khoảng thời gian để quý vị chứng tỏ mình.
I'm gonna give you, the people sitting up here, time so you can prove yourself.
Làm gì để có lợi cho thành phố mà chúng tôi đang sống?
To do whatever that would benefit the city, which I am a resident of.
Ví dụ như giáo dục, thuế, y tế và sự an ninh của thành phố.
Healthcare as well as the security and safety of the city and its residents.
Là một người cư dân của thành phố Westminster và cũng là một người Việt Nam, tôi không có muốn những cái hình ảnh thật là xấu hổ của người Việt khi lên đây tấn công những người được dân cử bầu bằng cái lá phiếu hợp pháp của mình để làm xấu đi những hình ảnh của những người nghị viên ngay tại đây.
As a resident of the city as well as a Vietnamese American, I do not want to have image, bad image being broadcast showing that people attacking the people electing out elected official up here.
Tôi hiểu tiếng Việt và tôi đã chứng kiến rất là nhiều lần những vị nghị viên ngồi dưới đây bị tấn công bởi những người đang ngồi phía dưới và đã từng lên đây nói tôi có đầy đủ hết những cái video bởi vì chính tôi là người quay. Hình ảnh của Nam Quan rất là nhã nhặn và không, không nói, không chửi, không gì hết khi mà bị những người cứ tấn công. Và tôi không nghĩ là họ đặt lên tới tận nơi trang nghiêm như thế này để mà nói những điều bia đặc không bằng chứng. Dài quá cơ mà.
I have evidence that Nam Quan Nguyen remains stoic. He didn't say anything when he was attacked by the people who came up here and said that he defamed them or that he humiliated them. Because I was a person who filmed or video or took the video of that.
Yeah, vâng và một lần cuối trước khi chia tay, tôi mong rằng chúng ta là những người Việt Nam lên đây hãy để cho những người bản xứ tôn trọng người Việt Nam. Văn hóa Việt Nam, ngôn ngữ Việt Nam là những người lịch sử, có giáo dục, góp ý chân thành xây dựng thành phố Westminster ngày càng phát triển, đi lên và người dân ấm no, hạnh phúc, không phải là những lời mạ lệ vô, vô căn cứ, vô chứng cứ để làm xấu mặt của người Việt Nam.
So before leaving the lecture here, I want, I want people to know that our Vietnamese people are not like that. We do not level or base us accusation. We are civilized and that we want to contribute positively to the city.
Vâng và tôi xin chúc cho quý vị thành công trong nhiệm kỳ mới. Tôi mong đợi sự mạnh mẽ và sự đổi mới của quý vị cho thành phố Westminster.
And once again, I would like to wish you success in your new term on the city council so that you could help to better the city, the city of Westminster.
Và nếu quý vị làm không tốt thì tôi sẽ sử dụng lá phiếu để theo hiến pháp, theo pháp luật để mà, để mà xử lý những bước tiếp theo là một người dân Hoa Kỳ.
And if you do not do thing that would benefit the city, then I would exercise my vote based on the US Constitution and American law. I would exercise my vote.
Tôi tự hào vì quý vị.
I'm proud of you, so thank you.
The next speaker is Tony Wong, followed by Tony Buoi.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, everybody.
Tôi là thành phố, Westminster là cư dân thành phố Westminster.
I am here tonight as a resident of the city of Westminster.
Những người đây nói chuyện không đúng sự thật.
The people who were up here saying thing, they were not telling you the truth.
Ngày 20 tháng 1, tôi có pháp luật tòa.
On January 28th, I was at the Asian Garden Mall on Vietnamese food of hot.
Có một người rất to tiếng.
There was a person who was being loud.
Tôi tưởng người ấy bị điên.
I thought the person was crazy.
Người đó rất to tiếng mà tấn công một người đang quay phim.
That person was being loud and that person was attacking a person.
Cứ người quay phim không nói một tiếng nào hết.
And the person that was doing the video, videotaping, that person was not saying anything.
Người đó quay phim đi lùi, người đó tấn công, cứ lên mà để giữ mặt gần cái mặt cái máy quay phim đó.
And as that person, the person that was doing the videotaping was stepping back, the person during the attack can keep coming forward toward the person videotaping.
Mấy người xung quanh nghĩ là người đó bị điên.
The people around there thought that that person was crazy.
Cứ người đó rất chửi, bậy mà tục tiêu, nhục mạ người ta, cho nó không tốt.
That person was cursing, was hurling for vanity, humiliating people. That was not a good thing to do.
Bữa đó tôi đứng ngay đằng sau đó, tôi thấy người đó nhục mạ, dữ dội.
I was standing right behind that person on that day and I saw that person hurling for vanity and humiliating people.
Người đó rất nghĩ là lớn tuổi mà rất xấu hổ về cái việc nói không đúng sự thật mà ra những Hội đồng như thế là không được tốt cho thành phố Westminster.
That person is not a kid and that person said thing that was not true, that was untrue in front of the city of Westminster, in front of the city council of the city of Westminster.
Mong người đó cuộc họp lần sau ra nói những sự tốt đẹp cho thành phố, best to xây dựng, tốt đẹp tốt.
And I hope that that person, the next time that person speak in front of the city council, that person would be more constructive and say thing that would be nicer.
Cảm ơn.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tony Buoi, followed by Nguyen Lee.
Good evening, Mayor Charlie Nguyen, Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen, City Council Members Charles Manzo and City Council Alan West and City Council Kimberly Ho. It is my honor to be here every meeting because I keep bringing the concern of a citizen, of a resident of Westminster. I saw a lot of people, they use this podium to criticize the people that was elected by the people and working for the people and they are here to work for the people. If you cannot, if you don't like them, you go wait four years, four more years, you go out and run for the city council position. That is fair. That is democracy. We come to the United States because we scare up the communism. This is tyrannical. And then we come up here, we become tyranny. That's not fair. So all of you who come here to criticize those people, you are shameful for yourself. Because last time, I came here with the motto, make America, American great again. American land and American value, great again. This is what we have to work for and I know all of you have been working for it. Except one of the person, she is not working for the people. She keep lying and she said that she will resign.
At this coming election, that's November 8, 2022, I will remove myself from the city council.
Did you hear what you say, Mr. Madame Ho? Did it is you? It is your voice? If you are not elected. If you are not elected as a mayor, you will resign. Why, how come you still there? It is because of you that a lot of people come up here to criticize other people. You are the root of the problems of our city of Westminster. If you don't want, if, let's listen here again.
My decision, if I am not elected mayor of the city of Westminster 20, at this coming election, that's November 8, 2022, I will remove myself from the city council.
Yes, that's right, you should unless are waiting for people to pull you out of here. You should, you, you not your, you not, that mean you will do it. I hope you will take it seriously and save the people Westminster.
The next speaker is Nguyen Lee, like?
Yeah. Yes.
I have three minutes? Okay. My name is Li Nguyen. Let me say it in Vietnamese first.
Người Việt Nam tệ nạn cộng sản là sắc nhân non trẻ nhất đến định cư ở nước Mỹ với những so với những sắc nhân khác. Vậy mà người Việt Nam đã và đang gây nhiều tiếng vang trong tất cả các cộng đồng tệ nạn cộng sản ở đây. Trong quân đội Hoa Kỳ đã có bốn năm vị tướng và nhiều đại tá gốc Việt cùng các khoa học gia lể lừng với những bàn sáng chế ra vũ khí và những hàng không mẫu hạn tố tên cho quốc phòng Hoa Kỳ. Mà chưa có người gốc Á nào thì chưa cái giờ làm được. Không kể biết bao nhiêu là bác sĩ, luật sư, tiến sĩ, chuyên viên trong mọi lĩnh vực. Những người này làm rạn danh cho dân tộc Việt Nam của chúng ta. Còn quý vị đã làm gì được cho nước Mỹ và các cộng đồng Việt tệ nạn cộng sản nhỏ bé này chưa? Chúng tôi không hề biết quý vị là ai. Không ai biết Amy West là ai, học hành thành tích ra sao? Ngoài các kinh nghiệm thay tả và rửa đít cho con, cho những đứa con của bà. Bà là người ra chen cử năm lần bảy lượt mà không được ai bầu cho chức vụ nào. Nên lần này phải gia nhập vào băng đảng Bosa để họ giúp bà thu phiếu ở những viện dưỡng lão và những mobile home của người già. Nghe đâu và cũng không phải là cư dân của thành phố Westminster. Ông Chí Nguyễn cũng vậy, không ai biết ông là ai, làm gì, chức vụ gì ngoài việc ra chen cử bao nhiêu lần đều rớt lột độc. Cho tới khi ông phải đầu quân vào đảng mafia Bosa thì mới được họ đẩy ông lên chức nghị viên và bây giờ là thị trưởng. Còn nam qua là tên du thủ, du thực, cô đồ, du đảng, chuyên môn đứng đầu đường, đầu chợ, chữ rủ, thiên hạ bằng những lời lẽ thô tục, thô lỗ tục tầm mà người có cha mẹ dạy dỗ, có giáo dục hay có học thức không bao giờ dám mở miệng nói những lời này. Nam Quang còn dùng cái YouTube của mình để tấn công những đồng hương tệ nạn cộng sản bằng những loại ngôn ngữ dơ bẩn, đê tiện, hạ cấp. Có phải đây là những thành tích và điều, và điều kiện để trở thành nghị viên và phó thị trưởng của thành phố Westminster không? Quý vị thấy người Việt Nam ở đây hầu hết vì quen sống với Việt Cộng nên rất nhức nháp, sợ sệt. Vì không răng tiếng Anh nên tránh xa những gì liên quan đến chiến dịch. Quý vị nghĩ chúng tôi ngu xoành không biết gì nên muốn vua ngồi trong hội đồng thành phố để áp dụng chiến sách ca chì đàn áp chúng tôi giống như Việt Cộng trong nước hả? Nếu quý vị là những người đủ khả năng, trình độ và tư cách để đại diện cho chúng tôi thì đã không có cái cảnh người dân tới đây la o phản đối quý vị như vậy. Chưa có một thành phố nào trên đất nước này mà có những buổi họp hội đồng thành phố y như cái chợ cá. Quý vị năn nỉ người dân bầu cho quý vị vào những chức vụ này chứ đâu có ai bắt quý vị vô đây ngồi đâu. Khi ra chen cử thì thiếu đều rớt những miếng xin sở phiếu của người dân. Lúc leo lên được rồi thì muốn tìm cách quay cổ chúng tôi. Chúng tôi là những người đã liều chết, vượt thoát cộng sản với những con thuyền mỏng manh giữ đại dương bao la. Chúng tôi sẵn sàng hy sinh mạng sống của mình cho hai chữ tự do. Đừng nghĩ là chúng tôi ngu xoành nhìn quý vị, để nhìn Việt Cộng mua chuột quý vị để quý vị đặt lên, để quý vị áp đặt lên thành phố này.
Excuse me, can I, can I stop, stop please? It's my turn. I just want to remind you that if you are using the three minutes for the Vietnamese, then you have only three minutes for translation. And if you used up the time, we will stop at, you know, six minute. So I just want to be fair.
I only a short.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Hội đồng thành phố có năm người thì hết bốn người là người Việt Nam. Nếu quý vị có đủ khả năng và tư cách để đại diện cho chúng tôi thì không có cảnh mà những người lên la lối, hò sò như vậy. Quý vị đại diện cho người Việt Nam mà không đủ tư cách thì cũng đừng nên làm gì nhục nhã cho gia đình và những người Việt Nam.
Mayor, if I may, we have a rule that if you utilize a translator, you get double time.
Yes, yes.
So there has to be a translator. That's, that's the way we, we, you establish the rule.
That's why we have six minutes. But if they, if they use six minutes for, for
Is she translating?
So translating another six minutes for twelve minutes, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is someone who is actually operating as a translator, that's what the law allows. I, I would defer to what the council decides, I'm just trying to state what the rule is.
No, I, I just want to ask you for clear direction here. If the person came in and, you know, if they, they have three minutes, right? So double time is six minutes. If they use six minutes to talk in Vietnamese, so do we allow them to have another six minutes?
No, 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 no.
So that's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, the question is whether or not they're entitled to three minutes or six minutes.
They entail for have six minutes.
It's three minutes and if they use a translator, then you get another three. So, yeah, I just wasn't sure whether or not we're utilizing a translator here, that's the thing.
It's, it's time.
No, no, she's still
And she has.
Two, two, two minutes and thirty four seconds. Go ahead.
But the reason, I just want to make sure we're doing this equally to everybody. So if someone comes up, I don't know if you're literally translating because you certainly may speak Vietnamese, I don't know. But next time someone comes up and has a written out statement, you're going, so we've got to treat everybody the same. Even if, so if they're not really a translator and they've been given a sheet to read, that's not translating technically, if you follow what I'm saying, that's all. I'm just trying to make sure we're equal.
I think I'm doing exactly what you just said. Okay, I don't know what I'm doing wrong here. They, they both have the translation, the translator and they have six minutes. I didn't cut their time off.
City, city attorney, mayor, may I speak? May I speak? Um, city attorney, I don't know why. We have been doing this for, as long as I've been on the council, that's seven years. Okay, so please, can't change the, the rule midstream. I know what you're saying and I believe they're doing the same as everybody else. They're preparing a translated statement. And so we've allowed that for seven years, we're not about to change that now. So
Counsel.
Well, we've been saying that. We, you know, we, we're interrupting their speech just to defer that to the council to, to talk about it. This is something that we've been doing for seven years. So may they finish?
I have a question for you. So now if the person write a long speech for like ten, I mean six minutes, then we need to provide them six minutes to translate. I want to, I want to clear on the, you know, have clear direction on this.
It's double time, they're allowed double time if they use a translator, no more than six minutes.
That's exactly what I'm doing. Okay, please stop, continue.
Vietnamese immigrants are the most recent group to settle down in the US as compared to all other ethnic groups. Vietnamese immigrants have been setting the most records too. There are at least four or five generals and many colonels in the US military. Also so many exceptional scientists, medical doctors, lawyers and professors. These ingenious individuals are our great admiration and pride. What have you done for this country and for the Vietnamese community? We don't know who you are. No one knows who Amy West is. What's her accomplishment? How much education does she have besides experience in changing diapers and cleaning her kids' butts? But also, she has been running four or five times for different positions and never had success. This time she had to join the Bolsa mafia gang so they could help her harvest votes from nursing homes and senior mobile home parks. Moreover, she's not even a resident of Westminster. The same with Charlie Chi Nguyen, no one knows who he is. He ran for a council member position for many times. He would never have a chance to win until he joined the Bolsa gang. As a matter of fact, they pushed him up to the councilman position and now city mayor. As for Nam Quan, this guy is just some thug standing on the street corner cursing, swearing with dirty language that a person within education and family values couldn't have spit out such profane words. Nam Quan also has used his YouTube channel to attack his fellow Vietnamese as exactly some no class dastard would do. And all these ill-mannered ways of conducting yourself, the qualifications, requirements for being a councilman and vice mayor, they are not. You guys have noticed that Vietnamese immigrants are used for the living, are used to living under communist rulings. Therefore, they are kind of timid and scared. The majority of the first generation immigrants cannot speak English as well as they try and stay away from anything related to politics. You probably assume that they're dumb and easy to screw you. So you try to get these seats in order to suppress our voice and to mold us like what's going on with the communist Vietnam. How you had dignified, had you been dignified and respectful council members who can represent us, there wouldn't have been that many constituents showing up here at each meeting to show their opposition and disapproval towards no such kind of chaos. Commotional city council meeting anywhere around the nation, you ask people to vote.
Time's up.
I'm up already, thank you, please, thank you. You, you, next time, please. I, I, I want, I want to remind you one more time. You know, you are entitled to have the translator. You have three minutes and if you have used this translator, you have additional three minutes. The total is six minutes. So there's no more than six minutes. If you try to use the time to speak in Vietnamese five minutes, then you have only one minute for translator. Because we have, we have the call, we, we have already decided on that. Then this is a clear direction that I have from their, from their attorney also. So please, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Westminster Watchdog, followed by Mike Trong.
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster Watchdog. I'd love a Westminster Community Foundation item 5.2, but with two conditions. One, no council members on the board and two, the purpose must be broad and benefit everyone, not just a single purpose. Item 5.4, the request to add two HLOs to this year's budget. Why add the full annual amount when the fiscal year is almost over, over half over? The staff report states we have two HLOs and one full-time outreach worker. But at the April 27, 2022 council meeting, the new full-time outreach worker was approved in addition to the already budgeted two part-timers. So what happened? I suggest a one-to-one ratio, three HLOs plus three full-time outreach workers providing full coverage of seven days a week. Please make the substitute motion and no ad hoc committee. The entire council should receive information, provide direction on this important issue publicly. Item 5.5, rescind the censure resolution of Charlie Nguyen. The gang of three are too busy trying to rewrite history instead of moving the city forward. FYI, when you rescind a resolution, the original remains in the archive official record as does the resolution to rescind. Mayor Nguyen, show us the evidence that the censure resolution is inaccurate. You can't because it's factual. You did violate the city's code of conduct. You did butcher Councilman Manzo's name in an email which translated to barbarian. You did spread lies on Vietnamese media accusing three council members of evicting Mayor Ta, claiming he was officeless. You did call on residents to sign recall petitions against council members Ho and Manzo. You did harass and berate a Hispanic special event applicant for over thirty minutes, which was horrifying. You did use the word craps and exchange insults with council member Ho in Vietnamese. And you continue this abhorrent behavior as mayor. Item 5.6, to rescind the censure resolution of Treat Ta was not added to the agenda in accordance with adopted policy. Ta is no longer on the council, this item does not align with required participation of the targeted official even if just to rescind. It's good to see everyone trying to work together at the strategic plan yesterday, but it was very chaotic as I explained in an email. Our newly elected official did not sign the city's code of ethics and conduct information statement until Monday, two months after taking office, only because of my emails. Did you read, understand and reflect on the complaint email I sent last week concerning the lack of decorum, civility and order at the last council meeting? Your egregious behavior must stop immediately or this complaint will be escalated to a higher authority and the media. Listen up, you must always practice civility and decorum. You must not make belligerent, threatening, abusive or disparaging comments to each other or the public. You must actively listen. You must not debate or argue with the public, interrupt speakers or admonish them for exercising their First Amendment rights. So wipe those smart-ass smirks off your faces, remain seated and attentive and start behaving like professionals instead of punk-ass tyrants. Oh, and here's council member Amy Spam West during a training session at last week's League of California Cities Conference, her crass and classless behavior was on full display and observed by over three hundred attendees. Oh my God, pay attention Amy when somebody's talking about you.
The next speaker is Mike Trong, followed by Nguyen. Mike Trong?
Tôi đã nói với Hội đồng Thành phố rõ ràng, Nam Quang dùng chức vụ phó thị trưởng nhục mạ mạ lị.
I have addressed the city council that Nam Quan Nguyen uses position as a vice mayor to defame, to disparage me.
Anh ấy gọi tôi là bị tâm, bị bệnh tâm thần.
He referred to me as a person with mental issues or a person with mental condition.
Bôi nhọ hình thể của tôi.
He made fun of my body or, or physical physique.
Tiết khai thành phố, không làm gì cả.
Regrettably, the city has not done anything about it.
Thì cuối cùng tôi nghĩ tôi có dịp mở pháp giải quyết là chúng tôi sẽ gặp nhau ở tòa.
And so finally, I think the only solution that I have is to see the city in court.
Tôi sẽ subpoena ông luật sư Giatoa.
And I would, I will subpoena the city attorney into court.
Rồi, người Việt tôi có câu hãy nghiên cứu quá khứ nếu muốn xác định tương lai.
Uh, we Vietnamese have the saying, if you want to know or determine the future, you need to research and look, uh, look at the past.
Nam Quang nói tôi là vua khống.
Nam Quang said that I falsely accused him.
Tôi sẽ đưa bằng chứng anh thi dự từ câu nha.
I, I want to provide the evidence, I'm gonna ask Mr. Interpreter to interpret each.
Đúng má, tôi không có xấu hổ khi mà tôi nói những cái chuyện đó đâu, tôi chửi đúng.
So
Anh phát lại tôi không nghe được. Anh dùng ngôn ngữ đăng lập của tụi mày á, đúng má, tôi không có xấu hổ khi mà tôi nói những cái chuyện đó đâu, tôi chửi đúng.
Uh, I'm gonna use, I'm gonna use the F-word when it comes to you, fuck you. I'm not ashamed to say that, fuck you.
I'm sorry, could, could I ask for the date and time or date? So before he was a council member or after?
Trước hay sau cái bữa họp của Hội đồng Thành phố? Ờ, để, để me play xong con mới có cả tháng rõ ràng.
Uh, let me, let me play it both before and after.
But that's a good question, by the way. This one before he become the, oh.
This, this one was before he became the city council.
Tôi sẽ play, tôi sẽ nói là sau khi tôi dừng luôn.
And I would also play what he said after he become vice mayor.
Đã đủ mẹ. Tụi mày tôi chửi hết á, tôi không có, tôi, tôi, cái từ gì mà nó, mà nó, nó đi vào trong đầu của tụi mày, nó làm cái tụi mày thức tỉnh được là tôi sẽ chửi, tôi sẽ dùng cái từ.
I'm gonna say fuck you. I'm going to say fuck you. I'm going to use every single word to get this through your head. Go ahead and post and go ahead and reported me all you want. So credibility is important, and you have lost your credibility so many times in the past. And so if you. So credibility is important. And you, credibility is important, and you, and you lost, you have lost credibility so many times in the past. And so when you want to change. And so when you want to improve your credibility, you would need a lot of time to change people's opinion of you. So. Whatever. So we have, we have to separate all these things and address each of them separately. And, and if I have to hurt profanity at them, I will. So these are the evidence to show that Nam Quang used profanity before he became a vice mayor. So this is during the occasion of Tet or the Vietnamese New Year or Lunar New Year, he was dressing in the traditional long dress. And he promised that he would be cursing again. So whoever said that I lie, well, these prove that I was telling the truth.
Time's up.
We already have given, given the setting of time already. I mean, isn't that? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's six.
I'm sorry, your time's up, sir.
Time's up, time's up, sir. Please, 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 we respect you.
The next speaker is.
You asked for setting up time. We, we give you that the time already. Please, please.
May I, may I?
Wait, excuse me. Excuse me, Madame, Madame Clerk, and also. Hold on, hold on, hold on, please. Hold on, please.
Please sit down.
Please sit down. Speaker, please go back to your seat because we, we. We have, Nam Quan is requesting to, to.
Yeah, may I, may I?
Interpreter.
Yeah, may, may you allow me to respond to all the accusation that been going on for.
Okay.
For months.
Okay. So my understanding, my understanding from their, from their city attorney that.
Yeah, because.
You can have a quick response. Is that correct? No, let, let me ask the city attorney. Let him reply my question, please.
The Brown Act allows a brief response to comments that are made. So that is, that is permissible under the Brown Act. Brief comments, not a discussion.
Alright, I'm going to make it very brief. Okay, dear residents of Westminster and all the council critics and opponents. After nearly two months sitting on this dais, listening for hours and hours, the countless speakers during the oral communication, I want to make some strong observations and comments here. I am as an official duly elected by its residents to represent the city. I am proud to take all the challenges facing Westminster from France and folks alike. I don't mind the feedback, and actually I enjoy the interaction. First and foremost, I'm happy to listen to your legitimate concern and issues made in respectful and civilized manner as responsible adults. I appreciate the position, the positive feedback and constructive comments from all of you in the sincere desire to make the city better. That I want to hear from you. I thank you for your effort in sharing your thoughts in wanting to build Westminster a better place to work, to live, and to raise a family. You are the folks who help us council members to do our jobs better, and I appreciate that if you do that. And second, as for those who come to this council every two weeks attempting to tear down my works and that of the city, you are only making fools of yourself in front of this.
Wow, you know, we, we need to shut this down. You know what? Because this is not, this is not, no, don't point at me. Don't point, don't point at me. No, no.
Council member Ho.
We have to take our council.
Have any positive to say.
Let him finish.
Other than bad mouth and criticize.
City Attorney, you're, you're.
Very frustrated at home, and you take your frustration here every two weeks without fail at every city's council hearing. Don't get me wrong, I don't mind receiving criticism and I getting corrected when I do something wrong. In fact, I welcome it. However, I don't tolerate the misinformation, half-truth, and lies that you spew in front of the council. Frankly, at times, many of these comments are just plain hateful and veiled in racial discrimination. This type of public comments should be condemned and exposed.
This is wrong. This is not right.
In your biased view, this Vietnamese-American majority council never does anything right, only wrong, wrong, and wrong, and you are full of manufactured anger with your comments. Frankly, it is pathetic, very, very pathetic. I say, perform because it is what it is with you, a transparent performance. It is just an act full of frustration and pettiness.
Council, council member, I mean, Vice Mayor Nguyen. Can we, can we also defer this one until the end of the, I mean, the end of the oral communication? I know that you have more to say. Is that okay? To ask you to wait until the end, and I will have time for you to, to continue.
I just want to quickly say, and I remembered you said that I could make a quick statement. My statement is very quick. I'm, I'm really protesting the fact that our city attorney is sitting there watching this happen and also the city, our city mayor. Okay, I just want to let you know that you're in violation. Number one is you're intimidating the speakers. That to me, I, I've had to face my critics, and you know who they are. I've sat here and I think that person, you know that person who just spoke. I don't think I took the time to say it to his face or intimidate him.
I don't think that.
I, I am.
I don't think this is a time.
I just want to let you know.
You can respond to the, the speaker, but you can't. This is not the time for you to, to talk against the.
Mayor, if I may, just because I want to make sure there's no misunderstanding. When comments are made during public comment, we're not allowed to engage into a discussion. That is very clear unless an urgency item happens and you add it to the agenda. Sometimes, there is a need to, to respond to something. So the Brown Act allows for a brief response. What is brief? It is not defined. So really what you do is you look at the context, and is the response that was given brief in the sense of what situation required? That is what has happened. They have brought cases to the district attorney over this. I've seen much longer responses than what just occurred. So I'm not trying to defend or anything, but I'm saying a brief response is appropriate. What's occurring here is there, I have no idea all that's going on, but comments are being made, and the council member doesn't have to remain completely silent. They are allowed a brief response. That is permissible under the Brown Act. I timed it. It was about three, a little over three minutes. So that is the law, and I'm, I'm not trying to play favorites here. This is, I'm trying to, I was asked what was allowed. A brief response is, a discussion is not.
Okay.
Mayor, can I, can I make a quick comment? This has nothing to do with the, to the public, this comment is for us council. I thought we decided we were going to try to do a better job as far as conducting ourselves professionally. That is not happening, and I had to leave the room. Just to be full disclosure, I had to go to my truck, get some migraine medicine, but just listening to what's going on here is just totally giving me a headache. This better be professional, please. Let the comments of the council can be after oral communications, not to hear back and forth.
Please, council member Carlos Manzo. We heard it from the city attorney. The Brown Act allow those council members to respond, briefly respond. So we are not out of order here. I want to make sure that you both understand that. Let's continue with the agreement from the vice mayor to defer that until the end of the oral communication. I'd like to call for the next speaker.
Good evening for everyone on the bench here and also the people in the back here. We recognize you, do you? I'm here tonight because of the people who just got elected, people who were elected by the people. I am a resident of the city of Garden Row. I'm responding to those statements made by my friend to those, the three people up on the bench here. Amy Phan West or Nam Phan Nguyen and Charlie Chi Nguyen. They are not, they don't have anything to do with me, but I thank them for doing things for the residents. So during the last election, I was the person walking around to cancel that canvas vote for them three. I was the person and not them. I didn't go with them. I was the person going to the convalescent homes or senior or part to solicit vote or to canvas vote for them. So there have been people on the council for a long time. Why didn't, why no one said anything about those people? These three here just got onto the city council. Why don't we give them time? Do you recognize and understand these words on here? So, you know, these people are new. You need to give them time. Instead of going up here attacking them, disparaging them, telling them that they, the only experience they have is to changing their kids' diaper or, you know, or having a gun, throwing a gun. So give them, give them two years, four years, and if they cannot do a good job, at that time, we can bring someone else new in. And another thing, there's a person sitting back there who used to be my close friend. I will not say the name here, but that person know who he or she is. So with respect to the incident during the Lunar New Year, I have to say that because of that, I respect Nam Quang Nguyen for, for what he do or didn't do on that day. Set aside a person's past. And, and see what that person is doing now and who, or what that person is doing and who is that person doing these things for. So for a person to be in front of a camera and having someone leveling accusation of you throwing a gun, putting a gun to people's head and things like that, is that, is that right or wrong? Nowadays, every family, every household has a gun. I myself has a gun. Why, when we were friends, and now that we no longer friends, you know, you, you don't respect that person? And you defame them, you disparage them, is that the right thing to do? Why are you digging up dirt in the past and not looking?
Time's up. The next person is Nat Lin. Followed by Don Lee.
I would like to say hello to the city council of the city of Westminster.
All the words that attacked Mr. Mayor Nam Quang.
all the words that attacked Mr. Mr. Nam Quang since he was elected are words that are offensive and hateful, which is a personal complaint.
I want to assure everyone that all the attack uh slander fabrication against Nam Quang Nguyen since he got elected, all of these arise out of personal uh hatred.
And the man who just said, "I'm going to tell you." Those are not proof. Why doesn't he show like Tony Buoy, who has a picture and a speech?
And so with respect to that person who brought the loud speaker up here, uh tho- those were not evident. Why didn't him like Tony Buoy present evidence or facts and evidence?
Now I want to talk to Ms. Kim Bilye Ho. I think that all the people who came here and who are against uh Vice Mayor uh Nam Quang Nguyen, they were the same people who support your campaign during the last, last election. And I think that they have formed an evil axis to destroy uh the city. I'm a supporter of Kim Bilye Ho. And I've supported her before. And I think that they have formed an evil axis to destroy uh the city. I'm a supporter of Kim Bilye Ho.
And I think that they have formed an evil axis to destroy uh the city.
I'm a supporter of Kim Bilye Ho. And I've supported her before. And now I'm not supporting her anymore.
I am a resident of District, District Three. Uh, that would be uh Council Member Kim Bilye Ho's District. I have previously supported uh Council Member Ho, but I will not, I, I will never support uh Council Member Kim Bilye Ho again.
So why? I think that as a supporter, Kim Bilye Ho should help us build the city.
I'm telling you why I'm not supporting her anymore. As a city council member, she needs to help to better the city.
But while working, she wants to prove herself as a human. She went to the church, she went to the church, she went to the church. Then she held the first monument, and she went to the church. She defended.
So first of all, she supported the, well, she wanted to show that she's a heroine. Um, firstly, she supported the first Quan Trinh monument, but when the first stone was laid, she turned around uh.
After defending, she went to build a council meeting to hold the second monument.
So she turned around um and turned around against the first monument and then she formed a second Quan Trinh Monument Committee uh to go against the first uh committee.
And she said she was a fighter, but she kept doing the wrong things. First, she built a council meeting to hold the monument, and she went to the church. She didn't have the power to hold the monument, so she went to the church and begged five presidents to hold it.
She claimed that she has foresight or but she tried, well, the reason she wanted to build the Quan Trinh monument, the second Quan Trinh monument, was to get credit, to earn credit with the resident. Uh, she had yet to have a permit or location, uh, but yet she went out and built five statues.
Because of the second monument of uh, second Quan Trinh monument of Miss Ho, the city are
ran out or, or use up its money, uh, because there were so many meetings for the Quan Trinh monuments, the second Quan Trinh monument.
Then, when she voted, she promised that if she failed to win the election, she would resign. But finally, she didn't resign.
And when she ran for uh mayor, she said that she would resign if uh she was not elected. And then she was not elected, but yes, she has not resigned.
Time's up. The next speaker is Don Lee, followed by Ann Kiet Hung.
I would like a quick minute to reply to that lady. I'm gonna read three pages.
Please, please, you are, you are recognized. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, first of all, I, Ms. Nyuklin, I don't know you. And I thank you for speaking out, but you are one of the people who really helped in the campaign to elect the people that you want to elect. And by putting out their fake news. So I just want to denounce your fake news and you're one of the reasons why, excuse me, um, that we have the problem we have today. And I just want to let you know that none of the people here, unlike what you said, um, they're not my people. We are not campaigning. Um, we're just trying to conduct city business. So I would appreciate if you don't keep saying the same thing you say. Thank you.
Hello, Tony. Hello, Major and all councilmen. Hello, all officers. Hello, everyone. My name is Ann Kiet. I live in uh Westminster almost more than thirty years. I am the one saying the true and the right dear of you. The first thing I have to say all of you here must get more head ass, more crazy because all of her people stupid people say something, make something, make dirty this office. I am my people and I will recall her. The first one, the second one, the third one, he just left. And the third one, Tidal. Our people and I should be recall you out up here and all of you have a peace and nice day and lovely. That I said, I don't want to see all your bad people ugly, sad, stupid and do something wrong. You are Kim Bilye Ho. My name is Kiet. I say what I say. I tell them too. Thank you all of you. God bless America. God bless all of you. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Don Lee. Um, the next speaker is Don Lee.
Good evening, Mayor. Council member staff and PD officer. I would like to finish all my speak in Vietnamese before interpreter translated into English. During the special meeting of the city council of the city of Westminster in December twenty twenty, two thousand and twenty-two, Mr. Mr. Nam Quang acknowledged that the Quan Trinh monument and the City Council of Garden Row's voting was fair. At the same time, uh, those two council members have sent their congratulations, uh, have congratulated to the new mayor and the new um city council member uh with a landslide victory of more than twenty percent or almost twenty percent. Uh, regretfully, uh, council member Kim Bilye Ho had yet to congratulate the new elected official. During the eight months uh uh of the twenty twenty-two election campaign, uh, Ms. Kim Bilye Ho spent more than a million dollar. And she conspired with uh the husband and wife of that city council member from the city of Garden Row to attack her opponent uh on, on media uh all day and night. Uh, there was flyer that was sent to people's house uh with content full of lies or propaganda and all accusation. The majority of the voter of the city of Westminster was fart and they have spoken on election day November eight, twenty twenty-two, uh, with a landslide victory for the new mayor and the two new city council member. Campaign time is over. Uh, the winner have sworn and have taken their seat on the council. Um, the people who lost the election, they still have a chance uh for the next election.
Time's up. Time's up. The next speaker is Viet Youth Media. Followed by Deborah Mariscan.
May I quickly respond to that um speaker?
Yes, please. Briefly, please.
Um, I don't well, you allow three minutes before. Um. Okay, where is he? I just want to let him know that um I did congratulate um and I think he might have conveniently missed my comment right on December fourteenth. That was at the uh swearing in. So I just want to let you know that. So um if you could please check your facts before speaking, uh, you could help, you know, by not creating chaos. When you do, I think you're in cahoots with the person next to you and I will soon, if you could, the person next to him, uh, you, Mr. Tony Buoy, you always leave after you speak and then you walk away. Um, I would like to respond to you at my, at our normal oral communication at the end. So please stay tuned, okay? Thank you.
I just want to have something to say to the city's lawyer.
No, but no, sir. If you want to speak, no, no, no.
If anyone interrupts my
If you, if you.
I'd like to stop from the beginning.
Yes, please.
No interruption.
Madame, Madame Clark.
I demand full time back.
Please.
And if any one of you
I need to be fair to everyone here.
I demand to stop the clock and stop my clock again.
Please. I need to be fair to everyone. So you have six minutes. Go ahead and start.
Good evening, my sincerely greeting to everyone.
And I would like to share my um sorrow uh with the victim uh of the recent earthquakes.
Okay.
I heard that you have just gone through the orientation to become um an elected official.
To sit on the diaphragm.
And so I hope that after the orientation, you would understand my criticism and also my instructive comment.
Uh. Mr. Mayor Charlie Nguyen.
Mayor Charlie Nguyen.
You have to understand that the rules, the policy here, uh, that's, that's your wishful thinking.
You need to understand that the
policy here, uh, that's, that's your wishful thinking.
You don't have to be so naive when you turn into a city mayor.
Do not be so illusionate uh when you translate the word mayor to be a
True mayor is like a large city, in a large city like LA.
You have to understand the management, managing.
I just wanna let him know that I did congratulate and I think he might have conveniently missed my comment right on December 14th. That was at the swearing in. So I just wanna let you know that. So if you could please check your facts before speaking. You could help, you know, by not creating chaos. When you do, I think you're in cahoots with the person next to you. And I will soon, if you could, the person next to him, you, Mr. Tony Buoi, you always leave after you speak and then you walk away. I would like to respond to you at my, at our normal oral communication at the end. So please stay tuned, okay? Thank you.
I just wanna have something to say to the city's lawyer.
No, no, sir. If you want to speak, no, no, no.
If anyone interrupt my
If you, if you
I'd like to start from the beginning.
Yes, please.
No interruption.
Madame, Madame Clark.
I demand full time back. And if any one of you
To everyone here.
I demand to stop the clock and stop my clock again.
I need to be fair to everyone. So you have six minutes, go ahead and start.
Xin chào tất cả.
Good evening, my sincerely greeting to everyone.
Xin chê buồn cũng như có lời cầu nguyện với những nạn nhân trong cuộc động đất vừa qua ở vùng Trung Đông, Trung Á.
And I would like to share my sorrow with the victim of the recent earthquakes.
Okay. Vậy là quý vị, nghe nói là quý vị mới đi học cái khóa tu nghiệp để trở thành dân cử.
I heard that you have just gone through the orientation to become an elected official.
Để mà ngồi trên cái diếc này.
Had to sit on the diasthere.
Tôi hi vọng sau khi học thì quý vị hiểu được những cái lời chỉ trích phê bình giáo hướng của tôi.
And so I hope that after the orientation, you would understand my criticism and also my instructive comment.
Mr. Mayor Charlie Nguyễn. Ông phải hiểu là những cái gọi là quy định này là cái wishful thinking, các sự mong muốn của quý vị.
You need to understand that the rules, this policy here, that's, that's your wishful thinking.
Ông đừng có hoang tưởng tự xớm khi ông dịch cái chữ may ra thành thị trưởng, ông nghĩ ông là đô trưởng.
Do not be so illusionate when you translate the word mayor to be a
True mayor là giống như của LA City.
A true mayor like a large city in a large city like LA.
Ông phải hiểu cái cơ chế nghĩa là dịch là cái management, managing, nó khém với cái loài mayor, cái những cái thành phố lớn.
You need to understand the structure of the city versus the structure of those large cities. The way the city
Full time mayor.
Would be managed, those large city would have a full time mayor.
Ông nghĩ ông có thể ra lệnh cho cảnh sát để mà bắt tôi, cầm đầu tôi khi mà tôi trái với ông?
You think that you can order the police to arrest me when I speak up against you, when I criticize you, or when I say something that you don't like?
Lần trước tôi đã có dạy cho ông, ông là ra ứng cử để trở thành công bậc của dân, public servant.
Last time I educated you and I told you that you ran and get elected to be a public servant.
Và tôi không phải là chỉ nghĩ ông stupid, I know you are stupid.
I, not only that, I think that you are stupid, think that you are stupid, you are stupid.
Ví dụ, lần trước chính cô Amy, trong lúc mà nghị viên Carlos Manzo đang phát biểu, cô Amy đã interrupt và nói hơi hơi như là trong một cái tủ đi chợ cãi nhau.
So last time when council member Carlos Manzo was talking, council member Amy, Amy Fang West interrupt and she spoke as if she was out there at a public market.
Đó là lý do tại sao trong những cuộc họp mà nó luôn luôn là quá giờ, quá 12 giờ đêm mới học xong là tại vì ông không biết cách điều khiển. Cũng như là khi mà hồi nãy một tư dân lên không nói về mấy ông mà nói về một cái người mới phát biểu chửi cô ta này nọ, ông ngồi yên. Như vậy, một là ông ngu dốt, hai là ông tính việc nó gọi là tiêu chuẩn kép double standard. Không biết cách điều hành.
And that, you know, these meetings often go past midnight and that's because you don't know how to run a meeting. You let resident
Một người này dẫn chửi một người khác.
You let this resident to come up here personally attack another resident. I don't know why you did that, perhaps because you are stupid or you have a double standard.
Giống như nam quan một là anh ta ngu, hai là anh ta bị bợn. Khi anh ta lên YouTube, anh ta nói là người dân lên vua khống anh ta mà anh ta không thể nói gì hết tại vì lột bắt anh ta phải im.
And it's just like number one, when he's either stupid or he's fooling a fast one. He went on YouTube and he said the resident spoke up against him and he could not say anything because of the rules of the law.
Bằng chứng là hôm, hôm nay chính nam quan đã tự vã vào mặt anh ta chứng minh, anh ta nói rõ khi mà anh ta ngồi trên đệm, anh ta chửi những người đã dám lên tiếng phản đối anh ta.
So there's fruit that he lie because tonight he was up there, he spoke up and he against, he spoke up against the people who came up here to criticize him.
And you're supposed to listen to us, digest what we said and follow our instruction, not to execute the order from your boss that you ignore our comment because you already have instruction from your boss. That's not the way to run the city.
Time's up. The next speaker is Deborah Mariscan.
Good evening, I'm Mariscal Westminster Council Members. I'm planned on speaking tonight, so this is off the cuff. I, as, as I was listening to people, I'm trying to figure out what I'm wanted to say. It really saddens me and angers me that people are mudslinging at you. Look, we all sin, we all fall short of the glory of God, we all make mistakes. Hopefully, we repent and we turn the other way from those things and we walk in the right ways. I don't know any of you personally, so I don't know what your history is or how things have really gone. But I hope that, I hope that we could put a stop to these continued accusations and mudslinging because quite honestly, my time's not worth it to come here and listen to this. Now, the gentleman that just spoke obviously can speak English and I could understand him. So he doesn't need a translator. If you can speak English, you should be, you should speak English. Now I'm gonna quote Rodney King. Can't we all just get along? The purpose of the city council meeting is to do city business. So now it is nine o'clock. We're still in, we're still in public speaking, oral comments. Council member Manzos and council member Ho, I appreciate that you voted no to cut the speaking time from five minutes to three. We have a lot of people that have put time and effort into what they want to say because we are concerned about the future of our city. We're concerned about the financial stability. We're concerned about the homelessness. We're concerned about businesses that are leaving, whether we're gonna be able to sustain over the next couple of years. Although measure Y passed, as we see businesses leaving the city and we have a lot of cash only business, where is money gonna come from? I could be at home with my husband. There's a lot of other things that I could do, but I care about what is happening in our city. And I wanna make sure that you care and that you represent, all of you represent all of us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Priveo.
Good evening. In respect of the lady which is saying that who can speak English should speak English, so I do tonight. First of all, so say good to the council member, especially Nam Quang. I read the 150 pages of the restraining order on you. So, you know, to me, I'm not gonna be personal attack, but I really concern that the Monterey, recently Monterey Park having during lunar New Year Eve, there are 10 people got shot by a gunman. And you have the history of going around saying, I'm so embarrassed to say it, but they, tiếng đang mặt. It's like fuck, fuck you motherfucker to everyone that you are angry at. You need to go to either angry management or something because in the court order, they order you to sell the gun. It's an unlicensed gun. But you know, who you sell to? If the gun is going to, to some gunman, just like in Monterey Park, it's very dangerous. And to the city council, the mayor is not here, but please send your message to him that city council should be worried. You know, I don't know if Charlie Chi, mayor Charlie Chi scare if one day you're gonna get mad at him and you have a gun. Who is gonna guarantee when he enter this chamber, he has no gun? I mean, the cops are here, but until he take, they take their gun, he could shoot Charlie, shoot Kim, Kimberly, or shoot, you know, the city attorney if he get angry. So either you have to have a program anger management for him to go through or, and, and, not or, and make sure that he's not carrying a gun into the city chamber. Because even though I don't live in Westminster, I intend to. But right now I am not in city of Westminster. I still care about the residents. Most of the Vietnamese refugee, you know, we start our life here and seeing, you know, chaos and I, I could hear from the local Americans.
Time's up. Thank you. Mayor now will continue on with.
May I? Yeah, I believe that we still have the oral communication, right? I mean, I, I mean.
Yes, oral communications, we now will move on to Zoom.
Yeah, how many, how many people we have on Zoom?
Right now, we have four people with their hands raised.
Okay, alright.
Five.
Okay.
Very brief.
Okay, brief.
Okay. It's very funny that this kind of lies are going around for so long and I am here to denounce what that lady just said because it's a totally lies, that's it. That I cannot show you.
Please, please, please. We, we already let you have the chance to speak. So now is the time for the council to restart. You done? Okay, thank you. So go ahead then call the next person on Zoom, please.
Thank you, mayor. At this time, the first speaker on Zoom is Claudia S. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Do not start my timer until I have confirmation you can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you.
Buonas noches, my name is Claudia, an actual resident of Westminster. Genuine thank you to Charlie Nam Quan and Amy for giving our city free entertainment. Nam Quan called us petty and pathetic, classy, nice one Christian. The presence of you three comes at the expense of our children, our safety and our finances. Nam Quan needs to be banned from speaking about other council members and their family, any city gossip. Hello Brown Act, for speaking about any resident or business owners on his YouTube channel. I do not give Nam Quan permission to talk about me. His violent past makes him dangerous and a threat to our community. His news is why we need resolution 5103 denouncing fake news, which ironically Amy cited First Amendment rights, but just voted to shut us up. And just to be clear, I want it on record here and in the presence of the public, our chief NPD, that if harm comes to any of us, our families and properties, I want you to investigate these three under circles. We have a saying in my family, timen con kien nandas y deriak netis. That translates to tell me the company you keep and I will tell you who you are. And you three, oh boy, the internet is forever, we all know who you run with. As an involved community leader, my family is always looking for ways to give back. Recently, my son and I with the Westminster Hope and Opportunity cleaned up Westminster Park. Between my son and I, we picked up 787 cigarette butts in under two hours. Our city is riddled with crime, traffic incidents ending in death, trash and our council is constantly in the news for infighting. Amy, Charlie and Nam Quan, what is your plan to help the city? Amy, you made the spectacle last month and spoke about the hardships the Vietnamese community has had to endure. No one has denied the tragedy and pain the Vietnamese community has had to live through. But you're not alone. As an indigenous woman, my people have had to endure genocide, colonization, rape, murder, disease, erasure and so much more. For many of our families, the border crossed us. We were not given refuge back into our land, my elders had to earn it. Our Jewish community suffered through the impossible. Our black American community lived through slavery and still struggle to stay alive today. Rest in peace Tyron Nichols. We had the Minamitso family here in Westminster dragged to encampments in the 40s because they were of Japanese descent. We all have suffered. You are not unique, there is no gold star for you and all of these cultures still live in our city. Though that may be hard for you to acknowledge because you continue to violate the law you so loudly speak of by blocking constituents and refusing to answer important questions from the people you serve and the hypocrisy. You talk about culture and tradition, yet you continue to disrespect our council member Carlos Manzo. Where is your culture there? You have proved that you don't follow tradition because in my culture, we respect our elders. Council member Ho verified that is also a common formality in your culture. So I am telling you, check your disrespect. Be the example you tout about for the youth. I would hope you wouldn't let your kids to respect you. And as a God fearing woman, be a decent human being and stop being disrespectful to your elders, colleagues and us, the people you have the privilege to serve. Respect is earned and until you start showing us respect, I will address you the way you address others. If you cannot endure the task of serving, then get out. Lastly, Happy Black History Month. Though it is ironically or not celebrated in the shortest month of the year, may we strive to be better humans. Gracias.
The next speaker on Zoom is Roger M. He may begin speaking. Roger?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please begin.
Okay, okay. Bravo Claudia, thank you very much, you're awesome. Good evening, council members, dishonorable mayor and his two puppets. I hope none of you left the room like you have been in the past, like last meeting. That is total disrespect. Nothing I say tonight is an accusation or a personal attack. Just my eyewitness testimony, my reviews of your performance at these council meetings. Nothing is personal, only review of what I witnessed here. So tonight, this is total bullshit already tonight. Allowing this clown Nam Quan to go off on people, intimidating in the midst of public comments, reading a speech, total crap. Some of you don't seem to understand why people speak up frustrated, angry and negative starting off these meetings. It's on full display. It's at least partially because we have the memory of the last meeting. And this is our only opportunity to address our grievances on what has happened at the prior meeting. We have an obligation to our community to keep you in check. It's our First Amendment right. Completely atrocious embarrassment every meeting and there's only been three meetings so far with this current council, with Chief Charlie Win as mayor and the two new council members. So far is evident that you keep kicking the bar of ethics and professionalism deeper in the depths of hell. Total nightmare so far this year. As to the items on tonight's agenda, item 5.4, adding two police officers to add for the homeless liaison. Unless this is already in the current budget, it needs to wait. It is needed for sure, but if the city is broke and because of the poor leadership in the past, poor council, the city is now over a $4 million deficit just for the first quarter. That will still take quite some time to dig out of. There's just no money in this budget for this, so this needs to be tabled or voted down until there's serious budget discussions and can possibly go into next year's budget. If you approve this, this will prove again the ineptness and the incompetence of this mayor and this new city council majority. 5.5 and 5.6, another total joke, just like last meeting. Going backwards, a resolution to rescind the resolution of reprimand of Chief Charlie Win and then Mayor Tretah. After the last meeting, I expected this to be next. This is just as bad as that was. This is akin to a 10-year-old kid demanding his mother rescind the time that he was disciplined and made to sit in the corner five years ago or the timeout chair for 30 minutes. It already happened. And this is just going to remind people and educate more people of the despicable behavior and actions of this current mayor. So Mr. Win?
Time's up. The next speaker is Amy Walsh.
Hello? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please begin.
Well, first thing I wanted to say is I'm gonna kind of start up where Roger left off. The fact that these 5.5 and 5.6 had been brought back when just the last meeting, I believe it was Amy that had said, we're trying to move forward. Stop going to the past, we wanna move forward. I just keep carrying forward, forward, forward. But lo and behold, here we're jumping back into the time machine and bringing back things that are already done and don't need to be brought back. I think it's completely ridiculous and talk about it wasting time at these meetings, come on now. Secondly, I, you know, I talked to many people today and people I've been hearing say, you know, you catch more flies with honey and, you know, try to be nicer with your comments and that kind of thing. And I'll tell you, I was going to until Nam Quan decided to speak up and call the constituents and the people that call in. and call the constituents and the people that call in petty. Oh gosh, what were the other things? I'm sure other people will yell it out right now. But my point is, is I will give respect when people earn it. And right now, the three council members in question, they aren't earning anyone's respect by how they're acting. I, I was able to go into the study session yesterday. And, you know, I have made comments in regards to Amy West, making sure that she uses the correct terms and names when she's talking about fellow council members. Yesterday, because, I mean, I'm assuming that she just doesn't like me because I, you know, criticize, even though I'm just a resident and she's a council member. It made me laugh that yesterday she misplaced or misspelled, you know, mispronounced my name and I thought, wow. So apparently this is just something that maybe she does. I just think, like others have said tonight, not just me, that you and the other two council members, Amy, should really start learning to respect. If you want the respect given to you, you need to earn it and you need to give it out as well. So for now, I'm just gonna keep calling you Amy East until you can understand that Carlos's name isn't just Carlos, it's Carlos Manzo or Councilmember Manzo. That's all.
The next speaker is Camila. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Can you hear me, Lucy?
Yes, please go ahead.
Camila, resident of Westminster, I'd say good evening, but I'd be lying. Christian, what in the hell did you just allow to happen? Nam Quan had a prepared statement to read during oral communication, taking time away from the public. And furthermore, he was allowed to chastise, intimidate and ridicule the public from the damn dais. And by your own estimate of time, Nam Quan was given more time to respond than members of the public are allowed to speak tonight. So your statement that it was brief is a blatant damn lie. Additionally, you have failed to address the issue of Amy blocking constituents, and that list is ever growing. Lastly, stop chit chatting with her. She needs to pay attention so the public can see that she did more at the recent conference than just sit with her feet up on chairs while she played on her phone. Mayor Nguyen, you really are difficult to underestimate. You're doing everything you can to run this city like a dictator. There was no need to shorten time tonight, except for you guys. You are merely trying to silence the public. Amy and Nam Quan keep saying we need to move forward, yet all they seem to do is revisit items from the past. That's holding the city and its residents hostage, far away from progress. And tonight, there's gonna be a tree somewhere in the world working hard to replace the oxygen those two will waste on item five point five. As for item five point six, I'm curious as to how Mayor Nguyen was able to unilaterally place an item on the agenda. I thought we just had this discussion on January eleventh. And this council voted that two council members must contact the city manager to place an item on the agenda. There was no provision to allow different treatment for the mayor. Additionally, item five point three from January eleventh required that requests by council members be made two Thursdays prior to the meeting. Moving forward, I ask that the date the request is made be included in the agenda alongside the name of the requesting council members. Transparency is imperative, especially with this dysfunctional council. Councilmember Ho and Councilmember Manzo, thank you for being the only voices of reason on that dais. The behavior by your counterparts is abhorrent, vile, disgusting and disrespectful. I would say shame on the three of you, but you seem to wear shame like a badge of honor. City manager Cordone, I highly suggest you bring a parliamentarian in to aid with these meetings. This council is completely out of order and is going to get us sued. And the residents of this city deserve a hell of a lot better than what we're getting. Thank you and Happy Black History Month.
The next speaker is Tammy Hamel. Please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Hi, Tammy Hamel, Westminster resident. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. I'm kind of following the last two speakers. I also understand people wanting to move forward and give the new council members a chance, but again, the vice mayor just proved the point of the people saying that he attacks those who oppose him by calling them fools, pathetic and racist are the words that I remember hearing. And that did look like it was a written statement, so it wasn't even off the cuff. So he wrote it, he sat on it, let it marinate a little bit and still read it in a council meeting. So he literally is proving the point of everyone who says he attacks the people who oppose him. And not only that, the, the mayor, who had just said, talked about decorum, being respectful to the residents, apparently is the only ones he was talking to. Instead of him stopping him by saying you can't attack residents, that's not decorum, that's not respectful. No, he bangs his gavel at Kimberly Ho, who was speaking up and saying, that's not okay, that's disrespectful. How can you move on when you've got council members, a mayor and a vice mayor, who are acting this way and talking that way about residents? There is no moving forward until you all get respectful, you listen to residents, you stop playing your stupid political games and you start working for all of the residents of Westminster, not just the ones that you deem worthy. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on Zoom, please raise your hand at this time. Mayor, no one else has raised their hand. That concludes oral communications.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank you all for, you know, to come out and then speak your mind. At this point here, I don't, I am open up for the council to respond as I promised at the end of the oral communication. So anyone to?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Since it's nine twenty-two, we have a lot of city business that we have to take care of. Are there a way that we can pull five point two to five point six to start first? Would that be a consideration?
Yes. Do you think manager assistants, city measures, we can do that right now, right? That's okay, vote.
Christian, can you advise us on that?
Well, you have a public hearing, don't we? You want to, you want to pull, or you want to bring?
Two.
And six or five, two? You want to bring them first after public comment?
We just finished.
So, yes, I mean, excuse me, after the consent calendar, is that what you're proposing? If the council wishes to do that, they could motion to move those items forward.
Okay, so is that your motion? Is there a second to that?
Is there a stated time for the public hearing? I just want to make sure.
There, there's no stated time for the public hearing.
I second.
Okay. According to the city attorney, we can move these items as requested by a council member West. And we have the second of the floor. Rule call vote, please.
Mayor, just for clarification, can you repeat the items that you wish to move out of order, please?
Five point two to five point six.
Move it before.
For the public hearing, which is.
So we're saying that those, those items are more important than the public hearing item? Is that what I'm hearing?
This is important issues that we have to take care of and I want to make sure the city business is taken care of. So we have a motion on the floor, I believe, right? And now we're supposed to vote?
We have the motion.
I just want to say, well, this not city business when you're talking about last year's, what is it, rescinding of some resolution? And so that's definitely not important. I move to take it in the order that we normally do, which is the public hearing goes next.
Was there a second to that? Is that a substitute motion?
That's a substitute motion, please.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second a substitute motion, the reason being that I feel housing is more important than, than a a denouncement of something that nobody cares about.
Yes.
So go ahead.
Can we have a vote on substitute motion then?
Motion first.
Yes, so the substitute motion was made by council member Ho, seconded by council member Manzo to continue the agenda as is. Councilwoman Fan West?
No.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
No.
Mayor Nguyen?
No.
Motion fails two, three.
Go back to the original, please.
So the original motion was made by councilwoman Fan West and seconded by the mayor, and that is to move out of order. Agenda items five.
I, I believe, the vice mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor made the second, I will correct that. And that is to move out of order agenda item five point two through five point six and prior to the public hearing. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yeah, I want to say with the homeless, adding two more homeless is very important in that five point four. So that's why I vote for yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Manzo?
No.
Councilmember Ho?
What are we voting on?
The original motion to move the items out of order.
No.
Point two to five point. Your vote is no? Okay, thank you. Council, excuse me, Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries two, mayor.
Alright, so next is the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Now, let me read that first and then can you, can you hold on?
Yeah.
All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a rule call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request that specific item to be removed from the consent calendar source for separate action or discussion.
Mayor?
Yes.
The city clerk had some changes to those minutes that she read into the record, I believe. I think you've already got those in the record, so she would like that included in the motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve with the amended amendments that city clerk mentioned.
Thank you.
I would like to pull three point five, please.
Motion, motion to approve with except item three point five.
Okay, the first, the first motion is by council member Manzo. Is there a second to that?
I second that with the option that I'm going to pull three point five.
Do you mind to alter your?
Yeah, yeah, I already made that out. I already made that.
Okay. So there is a motion on the floor and a motion and second. All items on, on consent calendar except for item three point five being approved.
Yes, mayor, and that is also to include the corrections on the minutes, which is item three point one as well. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Council, councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, so three point five, Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes, the reason that I want to pull that three point five item for discussion is I believe that the, the COVID emergency that imply on our state has been lifted or expired, so we should be, go back to normal. So that is reason that I, I pull it.
Okay, any other comments?
I have a question, mayor.
Yes, please.
Is, is this still tied to the state as far as funding? I know we were, that was the, how we kept it going because of that would, if we ended it prior, it would end, end some possible funding. Is that still, is that still the same?
So item three point four is actually the continuation of the local emergency.
Yeah.
And we're discussing item three point five.
Yeah, that's the one. Isn't that what we're talking about? Telephonic?
Telephonic, yes.
Three point four, three point four is reaffirming that the existence of a local emergency. That's three point four, and that's the one that's tied to the funding.
Okay, that's my question, not the telephonic.
Telephone.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that the, that will expire at the end of this month, February twenty eighth. That's the official date for the governor's order.
Correct. If there's no additional comments on this, so do I have a motion and a second on this?
Yes, I want to make a motion to, so if we want to withdraw this?
Yes, you can.
No, no, I mean, like, I'm going to.
If you don't agree with this, then you could vote no.
Okay, so, but, but he's making the motion right now.
Yes, making a motion. I, I don't want this to be continued.
Okay. How, how do you understand that?
How do you vote in it?
Just a motion to deny the resolution.
Denied the resolution.
Alright, I'm going to deny it. I make a motion to deny it.
I second it.
Okay, we have motion and second on the floor. Rule call vote, please.
I just have, I want to just clarify, mayor, with staff, either city attorney or adult. So we don't have any, we're not any risk of losing anything by, if this ends, correct?
The one that is tied to the local emergency is three, four. That's the one that we've advised council consistently since the beginning of COVID, that we needed to follow the state and not risk any federal funding.
And then there's no negative impacts by.
Would we risk federal fund funding?
Not with, not with the three point five item that is in front of you. You lose the flexibility of the telephonic, but not risk funding from the feds or from the state.
Okay, so current, so there is no negative impacts. The only thing's gonna prevent is from Zoom.
What, what you worry about is three point four.
Alright, that's correct, sir.
Alright, yes. Thank you.
Alright, so rule call vote, please.
Thank you, mayor. That motion was made by Vice Mayor Nguyen and seconded by councilwoman Fan West, and that is to deny the resolution as listed related to the conduct of remote telephonic meetings during a state of emergency. Councilmember, Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Now we are going to skip for our public hearings to go directly to relevant city business. Five point one, approve increase of purchase order to acquire metric sales company for the purchase of sensors, water meters and repair parts for.
I believe we, we're jumping to five, five point two, I believe, sir.
Okay, alright, so, okay, my apology. Okay, five point two, which is request to establish a Westminster nonprofit community foundation. And this is by, requested by councilmember West and second, I mean, second by Vice Mayor Nguyen. So councilmember West, go ahead.
You know, it, it's so amazing that recently we have the Ted parade and it was a great success, the most traffic, foot traffic into our city and the businesses were getting that profit. So it was phenomenal, thanks to the staff, you know, to help get that going to celebrate the new year, even though we have a tragedy in Monterey Park. So with that in mind, I noticed that creating this foundation, Westminster Community Foundation, it will be a tax write-off and it's easier. As I was on the ad hoc committee, it was hard to ask donors to donate to this cause without a tax write-off. So with this foundation, it will help us with this Ted parade planning for next year, but also other community project as well in this nonprofit organization. And the staff will create that board, and so we're really excited. So that way, those donors who want to donate will be more willingly donate with a larger amount for the cause of the city nonprofit organization and utilize it for different, you know, Ted parade to, you know, different program and project with our youth and whatnot. So this is a good thing and they can get a tax write-off as well. So I motion to move, to approve, to vote on this.
Sir, sir. I understand what we are trying to do here for nonprofit community foundation with your motion. With your motion is, can you repeat your motion again, please?
So basically, this is a nonprofit, is today to have the staff to get it started. And then also with this, a sub motion to this was to add a ad hoc committee as well to help with the staff and the board.
Okay, alright.
May I speak, mayor?
Please.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Fan West. Taking into account that we have a very successful Tet Parade and you know, with the staff, with, with all the staff help and with the leadership of the two councilmember on the ad hoc committee, which is Mayor Charlie Nguyen and Councilwoman Fan West, I would like to make sure that for next year Tet Parade is going to be, you know, more successful. So with your, with, with your experience, you know, for this Tet Parade, I would like to nominate again Mayor Charlie and Amy Fan West to the ad hoc committee.
Okay, so basically, what I understand is this motion is to create nonprofit community foundation with the two ad hoc committee and with your addition in, you want to have ad hoc committee and you nominate the mayor and councilmember West to the ad hoc committee.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please.
This agenda item doesn't include any kind of ad hoc committee, so if that's going to be something to be discussed or voted on, we should bring that, that issue back. This one is solely focused on the formation of a nonprofit. There is reference to an ad hoc under five point four. We'd need to have it on the agenda to really vote on that.
Okay.
So.
So, so you want to modify your, your second?
Mayor, may, may I please? I thought we had spoke about trying to have some sort of process of, as far as maybe hearing everybody, all the council members an opportunity to speak and then, and then have a motion.
Go ahead.
Councilmember also?
Yeah.
I would, I would like Christian to provide a little bit more clarity on this item. He co-authored it, do you think it's appropriate that he do this now?
Well, that's the question, we're moving a little too fast before we even get information, talk about a little bit more information, we're just so quick to jump at this thing. There's a couple of questions that staff, I think, I need to, and Christian, I was hoping Christine was going to be here because she and you were, you know, put this together. One of the questions that I have is, you know, as you all know, every department in City Hall is, is short-staffed. That is a concern, and then the staff that we do have, we have the, the knowledge to, to pull this off. And, and then after that, like, who would, who would be running it? I mean, that's something that, I don't think it's something for staff members to run, shouldn't, we have to, I think you need to bring this back with more information as far as the formation of a board. Who's going to be on the board and who's going to, all the parameters that would be, so they can run this, just can't just, you know, whimsically keep putting it together, I mean, we need some more information before we act on this. I think this is not a bad idea, but we need to do some research and some homework, and then bring it back so that council can make an educated, you know, action with more information that we need. Can we have you speak about it since you?
Before, before Christian provides a little bit more information, what we are recommended action is that the, is that we're requesting that the nonprofit Westminster Community Foundation direct staff on the formation process. That's what we're, that's what we're voting on today. Christian did put together the report, and he's got experience in, in some other cities as far as this type of organizing this type of an endeavor. Would you like to add to that, Christian? Yes, well, what I'm going to say is that the, the issue for tonight is really, staff can't do anything without council direction, so this would be kind of the first step, would be essentially authorizing staff to go forward if this is what you want to start the process. We can't rush to formation because the initial thing you need to decide is what, what is the purpose? Because a foundation can have very limited or very broad purposes. So it's true, we need to, that would be part of the discussion, you could talk about that tonight if you like. But ultimately, what you're asking is staff, go forward and, and start that process. You need to determine, establish a board, how big is that board?
Yeah.
Is it five, is it twelve, is it twenty-four? There's disadvantages to having really large boards, and yet, having too small of a board. Usually, these people are actively involved in whatever it is. So the, the, the purpose here could be limited to just the Tet Parade, or it could be broader to helping a number of nonprofits throughout the city. So this is something that should be discussed. Once you have that purpose and what the board is, they would then meet, and then we would file an articles of incorporation based on that purpose. That establishes the entity. They then meet and adopt bylaws, and then you file for IRS five oh one C three status. So there's a whole process that needs to occur. And once you get that, then that entity can receive donations and that sort of thing. But like I said, it could be just a vehicle for receiving donations, or it could actively be involved in the parade, let's say, as an example. And you may have twelve people that are all really highly motivated about helping with the parade. You also need to decide, are you going to have a council member on that committee? You obviously don't want to have a majority on there, but arguably, you could have one or possibly two to help steer the direction of it. Staff would probably, yes, I think as Councilman Monzo had mentioned, staff would be supporting this entity, so there's some cost that goes with that. But the ultimate question is, do you see value in creating a nonprofit that could help potentially with the operation, raising money for the Tet Parade or for other events and nonprofits in the city?
Can I address that city attorney?
Glenn, please, please. I think you both, you both have a chance.
No, but I wasn't done.
No, you, you already have it, let me turn to Councilmember Ho, please.
Yes, thank you. You know, previously, I was advised by city attorney's office. I believe, I'm not going to bring up the particular agenda, but that it is too involved for a city to, to, you know, be involved in a nonprofit or to start a nonprofit. So to make a decision tonight on a whim, to me, it's on a whim, because I don't have any information in terms of, number one, the risk benefits, if you will. If you could like bring that on board, I mean, I think, yeah, great, it sounds like a good idea, and we should look into that. And if we could like, you know, figure out like what's, what's our risk benefit? And number two would be, what does it entail? Was it involved in the hours and the people and all, all the, all the questions, the great questions that I heard earlier? So right now, we can't just be voting on something that we know very little about, and we only got this three, like seventy-two hours ago, and with very little information. So I think, just like anything, you know, before you make a decision, whether it be a small or big decision, to me, this is a big step. You don't even know if you're going to be yeah, doing, or be in charge of, you know, doing the Tet Parade next year. So all of a sudden, you know, I think, is it the cart before the horse, the horse before the cart sort of thing? Okay, so I just know that this past December, the council didn't see an application for, to have the Tet Parade for twenty twenty-three. So our city manager, you know, jumped in and said, you know, we should have one, and so we did. And so that, that took us to January of twenty twenty-three, but further than that, we didn't have any discussions about, yeah, we're going to continue, we're going to do this every year, year after year. We did not say that, and as a matter of fact, our city manager also, I mean, I, I know she's not here today to confirm that, but I'm sure city, assistant city manager, can you confirm that? That we were just talking about this, this year, this time, we didn't talk about every year.
We will be bringing a, a recap of the Tet Parade at the next meeting. At this point, we are not committed to future Tet Parades.
That's what I mean, is that I did not hear any commitment, so thank you for confirming that. Furthermore, so I mean, I, I make decisions, a lot of decisions, and I mean, for thirty years of my adult life, I've never had a decision that's like important like this and made like that and on very little information and then go vote, you know? And so I think that before we, and then the cost of having to do something like this, you know, keep up, not only do you, I know it doesn't cost a whole lot of money to form the nonprofit, but then to upkeep, what does that mean and how much and, and, you know, and the record keeping and all that, and, and how is that? We're not in the Tet Parade business, we're just doing this to, you know, for just, I just know that was just for this time. I mean, I'm up for discussion of, you know, should we continue? And then the other thing is that, before we make that decision, I believe we need to dive into, and of course, you know, self-critique. We didn't, you know, of course, I applauded everybody for the job, well done, that was great job, you know? But we need to also look at the downside, some of the things that we should have done, that could have done better, and could we do better? And, you know, we, I remember our city manager, and I'm sure you can attest to the fact that she stated clearly that we want to take the politics out of this Tet Parade, of the Tet Parade period. But did we achieve that? I like to hear information, I like to hear from everybody, not just from myself. So that is something that we need to look into, and we need to have those discussions before we go on, move on, and decide that we're going to have a nonprofit, and then we're going to, I know we're very overzealous, we're very excited, but we shouldn't take that route. And I'd like to see
Mr. Mayor, can I address her?
Oh, done.
No. I'm sorry, just let me finish. Yes, I'm almost finished, but I just finished my thought. Okay, so what I was saying, sorry, could you not interrupt next, I'm sorry. But what I'd like to see is that we have those conversations first, and we'd like to, oh yes, we'd like to move other agendas ahead, like city agenda, important agendas, that we so far have not even started talking about, such as, I know that on, I need, you know, our new council, our new elected officials did not even get their hands or head wrapped around the homelessness or anything like that. And, and then our, our city finances, and so we really want to get down to the nitty-gritty, the, you know, important part, those are the important agendas. So I think those are more important than the Tet Parade at this time and, and the nonprofit. So if I may ask, that we leave that alone, just table it, and however you guys could, you know, figure out how we can have these discussions so that we can decide, are we going to continue? You know, having the Tet Parade done by our city.
Um, Mr. Mayor, this is my item.
Please, please, I understand it's your item, but then Vice Mayor Nguyen have and get a chance, I have to get a chance to speak on that item, so let go.
I thought he did.
No, I have not.
No, 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 mayor, Vice Mayor.
Actually, already, I already did.
Okay. My turn. First of all, I would like to caution everyone that this, we are not agit, agitated for Ted to discuss about Ted Parade today. So we are not going, going to discuss into that. The item that in, in front of us here is for Westminster Nonprofit Community Foundation. Okay, and staff recommendation or the recommendation was to establish a nonprofit Westminster Community Foundation and direct staff to start the formation process. Direct start, staff to start the formation. It's not going anywhere, if we don't direct them, then it will not go anywhere. Now, my question for the assistant city managers, have we ever, have we ever looked into forming, forming a nonprofit organization before?
I'll defer to this, to the city attorney, because he's got more history with the city, I don't believe we have. We, we did do one for the senior center.
Okay.
And I don't know if we were involved in the Rose Center Foundation when that was formed. That may have been done completely privately, but I know that there was a relationship there at least. They may have done that completely privately, we may have helped pay for that.
I think it was to look into this, and you know, the item is direct staff to start the formation process. Therefore, I second your motion, but before I second your motion, let, let's revise, let's see if you revise the motion, because I know that you mentioned that ad hoc committee there. And from the city attorney, that we can't do that tonight. So if you want to go ahead and, and restate your motion, if you will.
Mayor, can I have something, I'm a little upset right now, because I specifically asked staff a question.
I'm sorry.
I asked staff a question, and I didn't, and you cut me off when I was trying to get a response for them.
Let me tell you, you tell me that, you know, you go second round, and then start with one, two, three, four, and now.
Oh, no, you don't seem to have, you don't seem to not have a comprehension of what we speak about. You asked a question to the staff. You asked a question, and they responded, and then you, you and the staff are having a conversation, you asked a question, they gave you an answer, and you had a follow-up question, and you didn't allow me that same respect. I asked a question.
You said that.
Responded to me, and I had another question, follow-up question to the response, you cut me off.
Please, go ahead, go ahead and do it right now.
I, I severely lack of professionalism in this council.
Let's not accuse each other.
Not accusing is, it's pretty obvious.
My follow-up question to the, to the city attorney when you answered was, when you were to come back with some more information, can you please bring back, I'm assuming, from what I understand, other cities have some foundation, nonprofit? If you can bring back what other cities are having their foundation, their parameters, so we can have also council and staff can have what other cities are doing. That's what my follow-up question, I had, what I wanted, but you cut me off.
Mr. Mayor, may I address my item that I presented? So the purpose of this is to offset the burden on the city finances, that's the purpose.
I, I apologize, I just want to make sure we're following the process. Mayor, is Ms. Monzo done?
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, and then the mayor should recognize you.
The mayor?
Yes, you are recognized.
So this is my item, the purpose I brought it up is to offset the money that, from the city and the burden, as we know, the finance in the city. With this nonprofit organization, of course, it will focus on the Tet Parade event, but also to help improve our youth, our seniors, low-income families and unhoused person living in the city. It's on our agenda, guys. If you guys have read it, it's on here, and today is just to motion our staff to create this, to offset all our events, and mainly big events like Tet or senior event or youth. It's important to use this nonprofit organization when they can have a tax write-off. They are more willing to donate to this city through this organization, nonprofit organization, so we can offset the money that we use from the general fund. That's the purpose. And if we're trying to save the city and still have events for the people and the community in the city, this is the way to do it, guys. Most cities already have a nonprofit organization to offset the cost, because when it's a tax write-off, donors, when we were on the ad hoc committee, mayor, Charlie and myself, when we were asking for donors to donate money to the Tet, I think, the mic, it was harder. So that's why with this, donors are more willing to donate when they can do a tax write-off. A lot of businesses know that when they donate to an organization, they can write a tax write-off, it helps their business. So that's why, you know, we have business here, business owner in, in the meeting here tonight, so you guys know. So that's the reason why we have this tonight is to vote, to move the staff to move forward with this nonprofit organization. And then from there, the staff and the council will decide what's the next step, but this is just. the staff and the council will decide what's the next step, but this is just to move forward, just creating this nonprofit organization. Does that make sense?
Thank you very much.
May I speak?
No, no, please. I, I want, I'm willing to go for the second round, and we, as we agree, now I can go back to, uh, Councilmember Manzo for the second time. You are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, like I said earlier, I don't think this is a bad idea at all. I think that, like I said, we need to make a more informative decision. If we were to, uh, Councilmember West, if we were to bring back, you know, a, you know, proper outline of what it would look like, what it would take, you know, as far as staff is concerned, all that, and then we can make, you know, see what other cities are doing, how they, they can be doing, like all the things you just mentioned. It could be, it can, it, they can be for seniors, it can be for other youth activities, it can be for multiple things, we just don't know. Let's find out, have staff bring it back, and say, this is what it would look like, how do you want to proceed, and then we move forward. That's, it's not a bad idea at all.
Mayor.
Thank you very much, I, 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 for the second round.
If I could say.
Can I speak? For the second round, I would like to, you know, to have you guys briefly comments about this. So, you know, we, you already have a lengthy discussion, you know, at the first row already, so now, go ahead, please.
Thank you, sir, just, just for clarity, this is going to direct staff to come back with a decision matrix, with a timeline, and with examples of what surrounding cities are doing as it pertains to this topic. That's really what we're being authorized to do today, so there's no, there's no decision on whether it's going to be only for the Ted Parade or only for another organization, we're, we're going to provide you with information.
This is to start the process of a formation.
I'm sorry, I mean, it's. We already.
I just want, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, next is, uh, Councilmember Hall. For your second round.
Um, okay, may, may I ask that, this is not, okay, so I, I will speak after I ask you to repeat yours again, please. Repeat what you just said.
So what I, what I stated was that the action would be to direct staff to come back with a decision matrix, an example of other foundations in, within the county or within Southern California, for cities of our size and demographics and, and needs, and to bring all of that back to the city council for direction.
Let, let me add that it does say formation process, but the formation process requires that we've got to know what the purpose is, which means we've got to come back and figure out what that purpose is. So that is the, going to have to be the first step. But if, it's, sounds like you want to include in your motion that it's a bit broader, and we could look at examples like that and bring those back.
Right, okay, uh, Councilmember.
Yes, so, you know what, what was done at the Ted Parade that we just finished, uh, that we just organized, uh, by our city, and that, that was done, that's over with. So we're talking about the future, and I just don't see any future right now. I don't see anything, uh, on our books right now, or any plans or any decisions for any future Ted Parade. So, um, so I'm thinking, i- if, um, if we want to do this, I also want to know, like, uh, you know, how much time involved, like, how, you know, staff time, you know, like I said before, it's like to maintain, to upkeep, you know, to keep up with all that, and what's required by law. And then I also, I mean, what's really important is that we, we need to kind of review the financials of what, you know, the previous Ted, the last Ted Parade brought to us, whether or not we even, because part of our decision has to be, did we do a good job? I know we, we, you know, if, if we're all satisfied with the turnout and the numbers of the people, you know, showed up and all that, but we, I have not yet to see the number, like, dollars, revenue, and versus the, the cost, so it just doesn't make sense for me, for us to, it doesn't make sense to me that we're moving forward to organizing
Again.
A nonprofit when.
Sorry, can I stop you for a minute? Um, City Attorney, can we continue to talk about the Ted Parade? While the, the subject matter here is Westminster Nonprofit Community Foundation.
Um, I think it's encompassed in it, because it is mentioned in here as one of the potential purposes of it. So if that's one of the purposes.
Yes.
Fine.
Thank you.
Please.
Yeah, so, um, you know, I just want to see that, to see if, is the Ted Parade is going to be excluded from that? Or is it going to be included, and if it's included the way it is written now, then we, we have to bring up back, you know, income, revenue, uh, costs. Um, did we lose money, how much, and did we bring in, did we make a profit, how much? And all those things, that's got to be part of, uh, making the, making this decision. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor.
Yes, uh, I would like to put in a few words. Um, I remember that not long ago, um, when we start to discuss about Ted Parade, and, uh, I remember all the faces here. You guys concerns about the money that the, the city, uh, you know, spent for Ted Parade. And, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Hall and, uh, Councilman Manzo are the true people that have a very loud voice. You know, uh, concerning about the, the money that the city going to spend. But in the end, we got all the money that, uh, you know, we, we just like us, um, what, barely spend the money for, for Ted Parade, we got all the money, or like, almost, not, not almost on the money, but about almost the money back. Okay, so, this item is very, very smart way to get the money back. I believe that, okay, um, Mayor Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, that we missed out on big donors, about like a forty thousand or fifty thousand dollars, because we don't have this tax write-off item here. So, you guys, always, we are, we want to, to move the city forward, but then you had to wait to, to hold it back. Right, that's it.
Can I just have a brief response to that, just, just really brief?
Okay.
Um, and perhaps, you know, too bad the city attorney is not here, but I was thinking that, as had been advised to me in the past, that we could always pair up with a nonprofit and let them and use their nonprofit, and as we've done in the past, um, so we don't have to create our own.
My, my apologies to, that I recognize you, because it is out of order, but it's my fault. Okay, I take that, it's my turn now. So, what I'm seeing is, is this is a non, I mean, it is a long process that we need to go, get into. And we need to start it so that the, this staff job is to go and collect the data and come back and present it to us. How difficult is it to, to form the, the, uh, the nonprofit? And what are they, what, what do we have out there from the neighboring, neighboring cities? You know, those are the things that we direct the staff to go and do it, if we don't, then how can they do it? And if they, if we work until the end, you know, it's a long process, you, you, you have to turn in the application and to get approval and this and that. You know, by the time that you want to approve this item to move forward is already late. We are already going to the next, uh, cycle. So with that, I think that we, we, we have enough discussion. I don't know if you want to modify your, um, motion, because you, I, I, I believe that you include ad hoc committee in there, and you're not allowed.
It, it was not, it was actually a comment made by, um, discussion brought up by, um, the Vice Mayor at the time.
Oh, okay.
Yes, um, if, uh, I would like to withdraw my, uh, my modification.
So, uh, Councilmember West, at this point here, I, I, I want to entertain, uh, a motion. If you have a motion, then please state your motion.
So I just want to make sure what we have on here, a city attorney. With this, what we have is to, uh, help, uh, address the staff to move this nonprofit organization, to form it, to get it good rolling. With this, if I do add an ad hoc committee to this, can we, I, I change that into a sub motion now, or how does that work? Or can once the staff come back creating this?
Let, let us do the, the.
Do the ad hoc later, or how does that work?
When we come back with the options?
Yeah.
We could have something on the agenda.
Perfect. Okay, perfect, if that's the answer, that once the staff come back, we can include that in. So right now I motion to move this forward, so the staff can get the ball rolling. And then once the staff get the ball rolling, they can add that however we can, that's after. Perfect, I, I motion to move this forward.
Just second to that.
Are you second? I'm going to second.
Okay, all right, we have the motion and the second on the floor.
Thank you, and that is, um, a motion made by Councilwoman Fan West, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen, and that is to, uh, direct staff to begin to establish a nonprofit, uh, Westminster Community Foundation, and start the formation process, and then come back, um, with the additional information and ad hoc information. Uh, Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Uh, before I vote, I just want to clarify something, that the, the verbiage that's currently being used by staff and then also by the motion that you just repeated, Lucy, it, to me is conflicting. We, we're bringing back this information is different from starting the process of like the formation of a nonprofit. So that's not, to me, the, the, the verbiage is incorrect, if we're just bringing back information, it's, she said that.
It is the time to vote right now.
Say that, so.
You can have a brief message.
I'm going to vote yes, but, but I'm just want to make it clear that the verbiage is, is conflicting for the, for the community to understand, because this verbiage is saying that you're going to start it already, instead of saying that you're going to bring it back information.
I can assure the council, we will not file any documents with the state until the council gives us clear direction on exactly what the purpose is.
All right, thank you, I just, a little bit better on the staff report, so my most, my vote is yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes, I have the same problem, is as long as you're just bringing information for us to make decisions on, I'd be okay with that. It is way too early for us to make a decision, so yes, please, uh, and, and do not form any nonprofit at this time, just bring back information, so my vote is yes.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused here, okay? I, as my understanding, the, uh, item five point two is to direct staff to form a nonprofit organization, not as like a Councilwoman Kimbello just said. Can you, uh, clarify that, Chris?
So in order to form a nonprofit, there's an Articles of Organization or an Articles of Incorporation, or incorporation in this case, would need to be filed. That document has a very specific purpose that gets put in that document. And I don't want to file that document, because it limits that organization, it can only do those things. So we have to very, have a very concise statement that says, this organization is being formed for the following purpose. So, we can't just go out and form it, right, at this, at this, we need a very clear statement from the council. You guys want to help, you know, the homeless, Ted Parade, wha- what exactly is it? And we want to put those purposes in there, we could state it very broadly, or we could state it very focused.
So, uh, just go back to, uh, the report, I, I think it's stated here very clearly that the purpose of the nonprofit can be very narrow, so as thing, so there's forming a nonprofit for the limited purpose of helping to fundraise and operate annual Westminster Ted Parade. Uh, alternatively, it could be stated more broadly, so there's helping to raise funds to support a variety of nonprofit organizations located in Westminster to help through, uh, improve youth, senior, low-income families and unhoused person living in the city, et cetera, so I think it's very clear.
So, I guess the question I would ask is, are you asking that we proceed with forming the nonprofit based, based on that second statement? To help improve youth, seniors, low-income families and the unhoused persons?
Everything is stated there, right there, if you don't see it.
So is that, is, because, uh, Councilmember, uh, uh, Member West, is that your intention?
So, when I confirm with our city attorney, I said, this today is to vote to direct staff to get the ball rolling with the nonprofit organization, but also to come back with more information, and then also to add the ad hoc later on. This is just to get the ball rolling, saying, hey, we, the city of Westminster, is going to start a Westminster Foundation for the purpose of donors donating, so they can have a tax write-off, so they more willingly to donate a bigger amount to help offset the cost of the city with different events. So that's the purpose tonight.
Okay.
I would, I would encourage you to, to proceed in that fashion, because I think it would be helpful. Having that direction about that broad purpose will help us to look for ones to bring you as an example that would have that kind of broad coverage.
Are you okay with that? For the second motion, uh, second the motion?
Second of the motion.
Okay, so, so, can we go back to the, uh, the rule call, please? Just to make sure that everybody understands.
We so far have three vote yes, and we're waiting on Vice Mayor.
Right now, let's go back, and let's go back to, for the rule call, please.
Woman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo? Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor five zero.
Okay, next item is five point three, which is update on Central Cities Navigation Center and efforts to address homelessness.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, before we proceed with five three, um, with permission of the city manager, I did want to uh, mention to the council, as well as the members of the public and to people that are watching on TV, that she will not be returning to the meeting. She is, uh, has to go to the hospital to deal with the personal, uh, emergency, health emergency.
Yeah, thank you very much for that.
And now we'll get started with item five three. Um, this is, uh, we're going to conduct this in partnership with our police department. Of course, the homelessness issue is something that is affecting not just city of Westminster, um, but communities throughout the nation. Um, so we're here to provide an update on the Central Cities Navigation Center and efforts to address homelessness. Um, Police Chief, uh, if you don't mind, we'll get started first with an update on the Navigation Center. And Michael Sun will be loading a PowerPoint, um, that he will run us through. And then that will be followed by a presentation, um, on homelessness, a homeless efforts by, uh, the police department. So if we can switch to the PowerPoint, please. So this is, uh, something we're really proud of, this is our logo for the Central Cities Navigation Center, it's a partnership between the cities of Garden Grove, uh, Fountain Valley and Westminster. Um, we brought this to you, uh, last year, something we're really proud of, we started working on this at the beginning of COVID. Uh, we were not sure how the COVID pandemic would affect the unhoused, and we wanted to try our best to be prepared, um, over. Yes, sir? We should be seeing it on the screen here, it would benefit me as well. Thank you for mentioning that, appreciate it. So, um, it's something that we've been working on for several years now. Um, over the last year, we've made great strides, and we are moving quickly to open a navigation center by the end of this year. Uh, something that the rest of the county and the rest of Southern California is watching very closely because of the, um, momentum that we have and the, the effort that we put forth to address these issues, it's something that's come up on a regular basis by our community members. The chief will talk a little bit about how it's hampered our police department and in community development, um, which I'm currently responsible for that department, our Community Preservation Unit, has really been deviated from what they were assigned and, uh, originally created to do, and they've really become, uh, a big part of the, of the Homelessness Task Force. So just wanted to let everybody know, uh, members of the public, that we do have a website dedicated, uh, to the Central Cities Navigation Center, um, very similar to the city, to the one you'll find in Garden Grove and Fountain Valley, since we are working on this in collaboration. I wanted to talk specifically about where the Navigation Center would take place, as you can see here, there's an aerial photo, there's a yellow box, uh, in the middle there. Uh, adjacent to it is a street named West Street, it's an industrial street, we'll show a little bit, uh, a few more pictures of it in just a second, but it's, it's near the, it is to the west of the intersection of Westminster and Harbor, which is located in. which is located in the city of Garden Grove. But just a quick drive away from the cit- from the city Westminster Limits, uh, south of the twenty-two freeway. Um, next slide. This is a layout of what uh, the architecture plan that we that we came up with collectively. Uh, the city's hired a consultant, an architect. Um, we're sharing in the costs of the of all of this with the cities of Garden Grove and Fountain Valley. The area to the far, well, we'll start on the right, uh, the on the right is West Street. So this is, this would be located on the west side of West Street. The entrance would be right off of West Street. The dual arrows you see to the bottom there essentially would be a gated, uh, a gated um, entry for visitors as well as for employees. Um, on the far left, on the bottom far left in white, you see some tables there. That's an outdoor recreation area for those that um, that attend that are um, that are housed there. Um, there's even a dog run on the left because uh, pets are welcome here, and also a storage facility. A lot of the people that are that are hesitant to come off the street are 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 that way because they are afraid of losing their life's belongings. So a lot of these successful navigation centers take into account the need for uh, housing their their pets as well as um, their their belongings. On the far left there, um, there's an air, there will be an area for men. There will be an area for women. And then there will also be a couples area located uh, in this in this general area. And then there's also a processing center as well as a dining hall or for their services. Go to the next slide. So this is an architectural um, rendering of the site. I visited the site and I attended a public outreach event there with our homeless liaison, um, Commander McCormick, as well as members of the partner cities. Um, we purchased the building, and the building, uh, for lack of a better term, has very good bones. It's a very good building. Um, it just, um, very little infrastructure improvements needed to be made to it. Um, it just needed to be customized to suit the needs of of what a navigation center uh, must be. And this just uh, for the benefit of the public, we are moving very, very fast, and we're really proud of the momentum that we built up. Um, I'll just move from from top to bottom on the left there under action items. Uh, the Tri-Cities MOU was completed in November of twenty twenty-two. We appreciate the uh, the past council for for um, unanimously supporting this. Uh, item two, we were able to um, partner with the county. Um, and this is something that I I spoke to the vice mayor about last week. Uh, we were able to partner with the county and bring in eleven point five million, which is a big deal. Uh, when we were at the conference, we were hearing about some other success stories from other cities, so we're proud to also be able to tout that we were able to bring in county funding for eleven, uh, to the tune of eleven point five million. And that is something that's important to us because um, I know the the feeling amongst community members is that this is really this should be some, an effort that's led by the county. Um, and in fact, it's become a local issue, and every city is kind of scrambling to address the issue. In this particular case, we're very thankful that the county um is essentially um, awarding us the the eleven point five million and and are really a partner in all of this. Uh, one of the fears was that then this gives them the right to bring in people from throughout the county. And in fact, that is not the case. Um, the beds will be reserved specifically for the three cities, not for others from throughout the county. That was kind of a misconception that was out there and a concern amongst the public.
Mm-hmm.
And then on three, we 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 had an RFP for a service provider. We're not in the business of operating uh, these facilities. Uh, our police department has a jail. They they also contract with somebody to 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 operate that. In this particular case, we are um, we evaluated service providers through a fair and competitive RFP process. And in fact, our Commander McCormick was um, key in reviewing the proposals and being on the selection committee for that. Any service provider has been selected. Um, currently, we are um, uh, the submittal deadline is February ninth for construction management services. So before we award the contract for construction, which would which would modify it to make it look like what I just described in the previous slide, we're hiring a construction management services company. Um, it would not be fair for Westminster staff, Fountain Valley staff, or Garden Grove staff to manage this project. So instead, we're hiring a third-party construction manager that's familiar with building these out. And then finally, um, we are at ninety percent uh, completion of the plans for a construction that will be released um soon, and the project uh, construction estimate is six to eight months. So the tentative construction start date would be April of twenty twenty-three. Um, and um, so we're moving quite quite quickly. Um, the goal would be to be in full operation by the end of this year. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to the to our police chief, so he can talk about um, his portion of the report that was um, that was uh, authored by him in in cooperation with the city manager's office. Chief?
Before uh, the chief speak, um, the presentation that you just uh, presented, uh, can you forward it to the council member?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Chief? Thank you for.
Evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Um, first, I want to draw your attention to the statistics uh, that are indicated in the uh, agenda report. Um, it's got four quarters of last year all broken down. Uh, as we look at those, and you will hear my uh, next presentation on five point four, uh, these these statistics are um uh, very conservative numbers, as our system is very old that that records this. Our our CAD and RMS system uh, is well past its shelf life. Um, back when we purchased that over twenty years ago, I think it was twenty-three years ago, uh, homeless statistics were not as important as they are today. So when we look at these numbers, I I could assure you, although I don't know the exact number, they are well above what is indicated in this report. Um, we are trying to better those numbers into twenty twenty-three, but using um, antiquated uh, equipment does make it difficult. It wasn't made for this specific of an item. Um, we are actually uh, have an ad hoc committee put together, uh, to buy a year-long um, process. We have uh, the council did approve in ARPA funding to help out with the purchase of a new system that will help us gather this data and be more accurate. So as we look at those, just please keep in the back of your mind that especially with HLO, Homeless Liaison Officer, Calls for Service, those numbers are much higher. I can't tell you how much higher, but I can assure you. Um, we also are looking at and council did approve through ARPA funding, the use of the organization BeWell, uh, which will go out and supplement our HLO staff, work in collaboration with them and also independently of them to address homeless issues in in many ways, and the council has had a a uh, presentation on that back in twenty twenty-two, and it is outlined in this report as well. Um, they also work very closely with the Community Pres- Preservation Unit, CPU. They're the ones that come out and do the heavy lifting, if you will, uh, cleaning up these areas, which if you've driven by any of them, and I'm sure all of you have, uh, it is very dirty, and they're the ones that actually have to roll up their sleeves, put on some rubber gloves and other protective items and clean those areas up. Uh, and then we'll draw your attention to the very end of that report, and we highlighted just some of our success stories. I wish we had more of them, but we are limited in staff, and that would lead to the next uh, agenda item, five point four. But we did outline more specifically the statistics we do have um, in quarterly reports attached to this agenda report. Uh, and also some success stories uh, of our team working with the homeless and getting some off the street and getting some help and getting some sheltered. Uh, and that's there for your review. Uh, I now will open it up to any questions if you have them.
Any question from the council?
I have a question, Mayor.
Please.
Um, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Adolfo, for your report. Um, I just had a question. I know that, you know, um, for this, for this purpose, since it's on our agenda, you mentioned the the CPU, and I know there uh, the CPU, um, you know, when it was first formed, it had a kind of specific task, you know, to streamline a certain certain activities in the city. Um, and I know that, you know, currently we're understaffed on that one as well, and it's very difficult to hire hire new um, members for that one. Um, I just had a question, or maybe I don't know if you can answer this question, maybe not. Um, and I thought about this before. Is it possible to 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 have a Public Works Department help when some of those cleanup events? Because I know maybe they have a little bit more staffing than CPU and possibly even equipment as well. I don't know, Jake was not here, so.
He's on his way back.
That is a good question for the Public Works Director.
Jake's, yeah. Hey, did you? Jake, did you hear my question?
I apologize, Jake. Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes, I was just mentioning how our CPU uh, members are, you know, really understaffed and and then when they were formed, they wasn't really formed for this, some of the tasks they're doing currently with the assistance of the our police department. And I was just wondering if if, you know, if Public Works may be a little bit better staffed and and maybe have the equipment to assist uh, our police department on some of the um, homeless issues. You think is that is that a possibility?
Absolutely. Actually, we have been working with directly with CPU and PD to help out when we have an encampment that requires some kind of heavy equipment, and now stop rolling it and try to help out as well.
Also, they they currently are now.
We've been collaborating with them with them as well.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you.
Anything else? If not, um, and I have uh.
Can I? Can I share a successful story?
Please.
Uh, so today, this morning, uh, I've been up since five in the morning, uh, going with our homeless liaison this morning and to tag along and seeing what they do. You know, we have an amazing crew of uh, homeless police who take care of the homeless. Um, you know, we have the CPU who are there to do the heavy lifting, and as well, you know, we meet different area where there's different jurisdiction, Caltrans to, you know, the Highway Patrol as well. So we met them as well out in the field today. And it's so neat, you know, uh, I was there, uh, you know, talking to, as we clean out Beach and Garden Grove area where you know the freeway, the twenty-two is with the palm trees. There was tons of tents there. I think we got about maybe ten homeless people there, but they're young kids, which they're between twenty, thirty years old. And then one guy, we were talking, and we asked him like, hey, do you have family around? I just feel like he has so much potential. And so we asked him, you know, do you have family around? He said, yes, you know, in Anaheim. And then, you know, he tells the story. He was teary-eyed because his wife died of a, uh, you know, giving birth. And uh, it's sad, he couldn't handle that, and then everything just fall, you know, out of whack, and then he stuck out in the homeless, you know, being homeless, you know, and not having a home. And so we told him, we look at him like, you know, you have so much potential. We realized he used to work for the union. And we say, you know, if we can get you help today, you know, gain you a bed, would you want the help? And he said, yes, yes, please. That is an amazing job our homeless police are are doing in our city Westminster. And that's why the next agenda of adding two more police as we, as Adolfo just announced that in October, end of October, we will have that navigation a homeless shelter, and we need help. We need more police, homeless police, because right now we pretty much have one. And uh, we need two more extra. So with this uh, five point four coming up in the next agenda, it uh, the next one, uh, it will be amazing. So that's why I want to share that success story, that our police is doing an amazing job, and we love our HLO police.
Thank you for this story. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, the the WPD is here. You're doing a great job. Thank you. Before we go into that, um, if there is no additional uh, comments on this, I move to receive and file the report.
Second.
Here we have the motion and second on the floor. So roll call, vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. That motion was made by Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Monzo to give a conference report. Council, Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Hmm, uh, I'm going to vote yes on this item, but uh, before I vote, I cast my vote, I have a question for Vanessa. Um, I am the um, thank you, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Fan West, uh, to be proactive, you know, going out there and find out for yourself, you know, the homelessness, um, is going on on, you know, on our city. Um, I also uh, did that. I I went over outside, uh, talking to the homeless people. And uh, um, as far as I know, there's a a portion of, you know, that uh, homeless population that they just don't want to be on the street. They just happen to lose the job and don't have the money to pay for the rent. And you know, that's where they, you know, end up on the street. So for those people like that, should we, do we have any program that, you know, can help them to get them back on on track?
For rental assistance?
Yes, uh, uh, whatever that you can, you you.
There are some programs available, and we can help connect them either through the senior center, if they're fifty-five and over, or through the Family Resource Center. They can help connect them with rental assistance or placing in perhaps a bed that's open now if their families and help connect them, utility bills. Um, so there are some connections that we can help them make, and they can either call Community Services or the Family Resource Center directly. And and they work directly with our homeless liaisons. So Commander McCormick is directly working with our Family Resource Center supervisor. They go out, they will give motel vouchers. There is some funding available, so we do have some of those um, programs available.
Um, City Manager and um, no, I'm sorry, Adolfo or the Chief, Darren, can, and thank you, Vanessa. Um, believe it or not, the population, the homeless population in uh, Doutau, um, Westminster, we have like, I think about sixty to seventy percent is Vietnamese. And uh, should we uh, for the two uh, position that we are going to hire? Should we, you know, um, have hires, one, one of the police officer that can, you know, speak in two languages?
I think that you're going into the next item already, right? And so we we are
I don't know.
We are voting on the five point three, so can you ref- refine that until?
Okay, okay, because, you know, we are talking about that and.
So his vote, his vote is yes.
Yes. Motion carries Mayor with you.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
I see you saying yes, so I thought.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next item is five point four. Request to increase.
May I interrupt, Mayor? Since we we are running late, and we did have a public hearing item, um, we would ask that we could continue that to the next meeting. Michael Sun is our housing specialist, um, and the item that is the public hearing item, it's not tied to a deadline, uh, but courtesy to the public. Um, if we defer it to the next, I think we'd get more participation on that item.
Yes, I agree. I was just about to mention that.
What item?
This is the item on on CDVG funding. It's a federal funding that comes to us. It disinitiates the process, but it's still a public hearing item. So.
So you're asking to defer uh.
No, it is item. Continue the hearing, continue the hearing, item four point one to the next meeting.
Next council meeting. I motion to um, move item four point one to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and second on the floor to move four point one to the next. The motion is to move four point one, which public hearing to the next, to continue at the next meeting.
So that motion is to uh, continue the public hearing um, item related to the city's housing and community development needs in preparing the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual action plan. The motion was made by Councilmember Monzo, seconded by Mayor Nguyen. Uh, Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes, I just want to say that this is the reason why we should not have uh, taken five point one to five point six ahead. And I really think that I apologize to uh, the people in uh, waiting to speak.
That's so go ahead and vote on this, please.
Well, yeah, I just want to say that and apologize to them, and I should and I can say that. Thank you, and um, I vote yes. Thank you. And I vote yes, definitely.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
Okay, so we are going to continue with the five point four, right? Correct? Correct. Okay. Request to increase. Did I hear something? Okay, request to increase the, to police staffing level to address homeless-related issues in fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. And to form an ad hoc committee concerning homeless, homeless issues. So this item is putting up by by Emmy Fan West, Councilmember Emmy Fan West. So you can go ahead and start.
Thank you. As I shared earlier, it is so crucial for us as we see the needs in the city. And I know when I campaign for my constituent, they are concerned about the homeless problem as well. And I sat down with the chief of police and asked him what are some of the needs that he needs. And this is what he need, is he needs help with the homeless situation. And it is the best time since we're having the homeless shelter being open in October. Why not give them extra hands? And this is perfect to put on the agenda for this so they can start looking because the process can take up to eighteen months. Is that correct, Chief?
That is correct.
Okay. And so I think this will get the ball rolling so you can get staff for the purpose of this.
Councilmember Manzo?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember West. Yes, I just have a few questions for the chief. And this is a good item. The reason I think it's a good item because I've been asking about this item for quite some time. And my question is, has the process changed as far as the, how do we go about hiring to more HLOs? The way I understand it, the way it was explained to me from, is that we cannot just hire two HLOs, we need to hire. And we currently are in the process, in a very difficult process at that because we have some limitations here in our city as far as funding. And we're in high competition with other cities who have more resources than we do. That we need to hire more officers and then we would open up the positions of HLOs because that's a special assignment, positions. I'm just curious if this process, the way it was explained to me, if the process has changed.
No, you're actually right on the process, Councilmember. What we would do would be to hire two entry-level police officers that most likely would have to go through the academy six months after the hiring process, three months. And then hopefully successfully complete the academy because there is a failure rate. Unfortunately, not everyone can make the police academy. Then come out, go through a field training program. At the end of the field training program, which is five to six months, we would actually take and sticking with city policy is we would open up the position for HLO. Policy on that already exists. You have to have a minimum amount of time on, it's considered a specialty. Gender Report is listed as police officer two, opposed to a police officer one. A police officer two is somebody that isn't a specialty or has completed a tour in their specialty. So the new people we're hiring on would actually not be HLOs. They would be police officers. And once they were hired through the academy, through the field training program and out on their own, able to to be part and counted in deployment to answer emergency calls in the field, then we would put out a testing date and have a process for those wishing to be a homeless liaison officer.
Yes, that's exactly how I understood it because that's the way you explained to me before. And so my question is, that process is already currently ongoing, right? We were already actively trying to hire more officers to get that process going.
That is correct. It's one of the top priorities of the department is hiring and fulfilling our numbers. This would increase our numbers by two, allowing us to do that.
Yeah. And then the other thing that I wish we could, but we, like I said, if we don't, we're limited is we can't really hire, we don't have, we don't have the resources to hire experienced HLOs from other agencies because we just don't, can't compete with other agencies. Is that correct?
I would say that's most likely correct. You never know what we're going to find. But keep in mind, we still have to put that person even as a transfer through the hiring process. When they come on board, this is a different city than whatever come from. They would have to go through a modified field training program and then be put in that position. Probably wouldn't be good for morale organizationally because you have people that would want that position that have put their time in here, have stayed here, not went to one of the other agencies that maybe offer more benefits and pay less work, that kind of thing. And then we reach out and grab somebody from somewhere else and take their job away, take their their specialty assignment they've been waiting for away. So I would advise the council against any direction on that one.
Yeah, that's exactly how I was explaining to me before. I was just curious.
And.
Has anything changed? Because I've been asking about this for a while, some time. So, I mean, it is a good item and I wanted to, I wanted to happen. I'm just, I'm just a little confused about like what's, like I said, I was asking about this. And if what I was told that the process is already ongoing.
It is ongoing. This is a council-driven staff report.
Okay, right. So we're currently in that. Actively doing that right now. But the thing that we need to, as a council, that we need to concentrate on is and we need to understand that, that we're in competition with multiple agencies and what we need to do is try to concentrate on not being afraid of so-called controversial issues because we need more funding in order for us to be able to offer more for our police officers to come to our city. And so we can be successful that way. Because right now the police department is, not too many people, folks are wanting to join because right now it's a very difficult trade to get into. It's not, it's a very, you know, especially nowadays with the political environment out there that you know, the, some things are thrown out there as far as, you know, painting everybody with the same brush, you know, all that that we've spoken about. So this is a good agenda item. But I just want to make sure that we concentrate on attracting and finding and don't be scared of revenue sources. Because we need, in order for us to have, keep our city safe, in order for us to keep our officers, to give them the right tools to to help with the homeless issue, we need, we need more officers and we, we can't do that without the funding resources. And to give our police department the right tools to do that. So my, I guess I'm just confused is that it's already in action. It's already, it's already happening. So the other question I have as far as the budgeting goes as far as what budget, what fiscal year it would, it would fall under. So shouldn't we move this over to the, our next fiscal year? Because we're coming up to or is it already budgeted for this fiscal year?
It is not budgeted. That would be at the discretion of the council based on your decision tonight. That said, realistically, we would not have to be budgeting for this position for at least three months. That's when the hiring process, how long the hiring process would take. And hopefully we're successful in the hiring process. Otherwise, it would take longer. So that puts us about at budget time.
Okay.
Map, the time the council moves forward and we can start onboarding, hopefully some qualified candidates. We're not always successful and we have to, it takes a few extra months. Sometimes other police agencies that are also recruiting, because everyone, everyone is recruiting right now. Our candidates are sometimes stolen. I use that word loosely. It's just a competitive atmosphere out there for right now. But is that, is that answer?
Yeah, yeah, it is. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Ho, you are recognized.
Thank you. Well, right now, I mean, just as Councilmember Cosmanzo said, that it is our desire and has been the council's desire and previous council as well to hire more HLO officers. And we know, we understand. But budget didn't allow us to, as you probably know. So, you know, my priority is really to get that number, number of officers back up. So currently, I think we're in the seventies, seventy or eighty officers. Could you tell me?
So there's a lot of ways to look at our numbers. We do have a number of police officer trainees in the academy right now. We not count them in our field strength because they're not helping.
Makes sense.
And we also don't know if they will be successful through the academy. A lot of candidates do not make it through the academy. So they're not counted. So I'm going to take.
So if you call, if you count all the full flights?
So, and that would also include, we have some officers in field training. That means they have to be with a police officer all the time. Specialty trained police officer, we call them field training officers. And they are basically mentoring them in the field, making sure they can do the job. We do have also a a rate of officers that are not successful through that program. They might be successful through the academy, but when they get in the car and actually are doing real police work out there, some unfortunately do not have what it takes. But we are pretty good at that and most do make it. So again, because of that, they're not counted because they're not a solo police officer out there. So they're not counted in our deployment strength right now either. So our current numbers were allotted for are in the low nineties and we currently have a field strength of approximately seventy-eight. With that number also includes several officers that are on long-term leave. We usually do due to medical reasons. Some examples, I can't put names with this because of law. But we've had officers that have been assaulted in the field, have some type of injury. They're trying to heal, they're working with a doctor, doctor says they can't be a police officer right now. Sometimes they have to medically retire if their injury doesn't heal in time or heal like it should. So I'm taking that out of the field strength now too, because if we do have quite a few officers that are injured on the job, we call it IOD, injured on duty, and are off. So right now we're at seventy-eight when you factor everything in I just discussed.
So if you were given two officers, would you, would you like prioritize for me? Would those two officers be your regular officers, seventy-eight plus two to make it eighty? Or would it be two HLO officers?
So the.
Might have to defer to you to make those decisions.
We will have to see on our operational strength, a lot of things will play into that. I would like to see the next two officers be HLOs. However, I have to see if any other officers go out on leave. Because right now there can be a fight out there, there can be a vehicle pursuit, somebody crashes, somebody gets hit in the head, somebody breaks their arm. We have an officer off with a broken arm right now and that takes months to rehabilitate. So I don't know what those changes are. So I.
No, I mean, not, not the changes because you can't really foresee them, although they are going to happen. But I mean, with the current.
If everything goes to plan, I would say in the next few months, with people coming out of the field training program, we would prioritize one of these positions, at least one, we would be able to hopefully do in a few months.
For a regular officer?
For HLO.
HLO.
HLO in there. The second one of the additions would take us a little longer. But again, if everything goes as planned, we don't have people getting injured, going out with injured on duty, people leaving for other police agencies. If our number stays stabilized, we might actually be able to fill these before that eighteen months of bringing onboarding to.
Got it. I know that you're, you're down to one HLO. I know you have two. But she's been out and she hasn't returned. So I understand and that there's always a need. Would you say that's a need or the want? Do you consider that a need or a want?
With HLOs right now, I would say, and based on just about every council member calling me with HLO-related problems, I would say a week doesn't go by where I don't hear from one of you with pictures, with issues at different places. So I know you're hearing from your constituents. There's no doubt. Because when you do, you usually float on to me and we try our best to get out there and solve that problem and address it and and make sure the person that's contacting you feels that we took it seriously. But I've got one specially trained person to do that and he's only here four days a week. And sometimes he's called away to do other things too, because we're short in patrol as well. So, you know, I I can't say we're doing the greatest of jobs. We do our best, but I can't say we're doing the greatest of jobs because sometimes it's got to wait. And sometimes we have to send a patrol officer out there that doesn't have the same skill set, the same training, et cetera, as a homeless liaison officer.
Definitely. I hear you. I know this has been an ongoing problem since last year or even the year before that. So next, Mike, the question would probably be answered best by our ACM, Adofo, regarding our money issues. So are we, currently are we? Do we have a shortfall of four million dollars this quarter? Could you tell me?
I would like to have Aaron come up and address the fiscal impact.
Oh, yes.
Our finance director.
I apologize. I didn't see you there.
That's all right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So I, I plan on bringing within the next few meetings and mid-year review will give us a better picture of where we are projected to end the year. We adopted a around ten million dollar deficit, but with the passage of Measure Y, that should reduce that. But I don't have an exact number at this point. But the budget is, even with the passage of Measure Y, because we we lost a half a year with SS, but we'll gain a quarter, we'll probably still have a deficit. I don't have an exact number though.
We still have a deficit.
Most likely. I need to bring the report back though.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you are now recognized.
For Chief Darren, if possible. So as I said before, I mean, like earlier, we are in the need of to have a one SLO officer that can speak in both languages, which is Vietnamese and English. Or if he can speak in Spanish, that's, you know, would be awesome. So that's what I recommended. Okay. And I would like to know what is the homeless population contributed to the percentage of criminal that has been increasing, you know, in this year? I mean, like in two thousand twenty-two, according to the report that we had last meeting, right?
I want to make sure I understand the second question, that what percentage of homeless are involved in criminal activity?
Right.
Do not have a figure for that. Certainly, there is a level of criminal activity amongst any population and that would include the homeless population, but I couldn't tell you.
Right, yeah, okay. The reason that I asked that question because just this morning, when I went to one of the barber shops to get my hair cut and on the Brooklyn, right at that corner, the owner of the two shops, the barber shop and one of the shop next to it, which is, I can glasses. And they said that they got broke in by the homeless people. So I, that's what, you know, bring my attention to it. So that's why I have the question. So, but I believe, I believe if we hired these two SLO officers, it would be benefit a lot to minimize, to minimize the criminal activity around the city as well as like is my, you know, untie your hands, you know, other officers going to have more more time to, to respond to any cases that need to be, to be seen. So, thank you.
All right, it's now my turn. Thank you, Chief. All right, uh, it's now my turn. Um, thank you, Chief. I, I think it's very clear explanation, um. And you stated that it's the need, uh, instead of wants. Uh, and also you mentioned that this is a long process, uh, that it take about three or four months, maybe more because of, uh, the difficulty of, you know, hiring process right now, uh, getting qualified people for that. I understand. Uh, need plus a long time process, plus that it will take us right into the next physical year, which we can determine for the budget, uh, you know, uh, for that. So with that, I think that is very, um, uh, we, we do need, uh, the, the staffing in the level for the, uh, homelessness. And, uh, at this point here, I, I, I want to thank you for all what you do. Um, I'd like to go back to, we're done, we're done, so you can go back.
Thank you.
Um, at this point here, I want to go back to the original, um, uh, request, um, to have you, I can, I know that we have a long, you know, discussion for each council already. Uh, I'd like to go ahead and entertain the motion at this point.
Yes, I, I motion to move forward.
Yes, um, can I, um, make a suggestion about you had mentioned that, um, part of this is an, an ad, forming an ad hoc, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Um, if you don't mind, um, I don't know who you had in mind for, um, ad hoc, but I would like to be part of it if, I don't know if you, if you pen on nominating yourself. But I think I would wanna be part of, if, if that's the, if that's the direction you wanna go in.
Uh, we already on here, it says that, um, of course, hiring two homeless police and also add an ad hoc committee. So in that way, we can go to either whatever the recommendation, um, within twice a month or once a month with, uh, our police to update on situation that they're doing with the homeless. Now, I also encourage you guys to go do a ride along with them. I mean, it is phenomenal. I actually enjoy it. So if you guys wanna wake up at six in the morning, it would be amazing. That'd be good. Um, it's a long day, but it's so rewarding because you see the fruit out of it, you know, and, and what they're doing. So, um, ad hoc for me, because I would really wanna be on this, uh, mayor, because, you know, I, I mean, I enjoy it and I want to, uh, report back to the public what you guys are doing. So, yeah.
I, I wanted, I wanted to thank, uh, you for that. I also know that, uh, council member Menzo's want to be on that, uh, committee. But, uh, I know that this item brought, uh, up by both council, um, council member, uh, West and Vice Mayor Nam Quan. I want to hear from, uh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Nguyen. Um, I would only respect to, uh, council, um, council member Carlos, uh, who would like to be on the ad hoc, uh, community, um, at this ad hoc committee. But, uh, um, you know, I think, uh, I, I would like to be on that too. So if, uh, you know, just let, put it to the vote and, uh, if you, you want to be on that.
All right, I know how it's gonna go.
All right, so anyway, um, so I want to hear, uh, the, the motion again, please.
We could have a motion on both items together, or you could take them separately.
Okay.
I think we should vote together.
I, I don't know. You, you make a motion.
I motion to vote together.
Okay, and what's?
So this is a motion to approve both items?
Yes.
You need to designate, uh, the motion, who would be appointed to the ad hoc committee?
Right.
I mean, it would just make sense because both of us are on this, uh, agenda, because we really want this to move forward and.
Can't do it, right? All right, majority rules.
No, I just feel like you've been here for the last, what, for two, four years? Uh, and how come this is ever brought up?
Menzo, let, let, let's get the, you know, the police.
So I motioned to move this forward and nominating, uh, myself and Nam Quang.
You say second to that?
I second it.
Okay, you say any other substantive motion? Hearing none, so go call, call vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. That motion was made by Councilwoman Fan West, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen, and that is to approve the addition of two full-time level two police officers to the homeless liaison officer team for a total of three hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three. And establish an ad hoc committee comprised of two council members, them being, uh, Councilwoman Fan West as well as Vice Mayor Nguyen, um, as members to the homeless-related, uh, issues. Um, Councilmember Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Um, I would make a, can I make a suggestion or recommend, or, uh, can we separate these two items? Because, um, I'm, I am for the, the hiring of HLOs, but I just think it's very unfortunate that we have to play political games with the hiring of, with this ad hoc committee.
That's a menzo, um, council member Menzo, you after the motion had been made, I already, you know, asked for a substantive motion. There is no substantive motion and now we are voting it already and now you are.
Because we know how it's gonna happen, so.
So then, you know, you have a chance already and you didn't do it, so continue the vote, please.
Councilmember Manzo.
If this case is, no, it's already happening anyways.
Councilmember Ho?
Sorry, what was that vote?
Um, the motion is, the, the motion is a vote.
Vote so far, do you have?
Um, Councilmember, uh, Fan West voted yes and Councilmember Manzo voted no.
Um.
And to be clear, just so you know.
So make a rest substitute motion right now, correct?
It's gonna, it's gonna go the, it's like, it's gonna fail, what's the point? So.
Yeah, at this point, they're, they already have started the vote.
You had your chance to, to make a substitute.
It's not that I didn't ask for the substantive motion, I did ask for, no, nobody, I said hearing none and we proceed with the voting. So at this point here, I'd like to go and proceed with the, continue with the vote.
Councilmember Ho?
Um.
And just to be clear, it's, it's both items together. It's to approve the addition of the two full-time level police officers to the homeless liaison officer team. And also to form an ad hoc committee composed of Councilmember Fan West and, uh, Vice Mayor, um, Nguyen.
Um, can I go back? Let me change my motion, I vote yes.
Yep, yes.
Um, both of those motions have been, um, your motion was changed to yes, so I'll let the record reflect that and Councilmember voted yes. Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item is five point five, consider adoption of a resolution to rescind Resolution Number Five Zero Eighty-seven, which previously censored former Vice Mayor Chief Charlie Nguyen. This item is put up by Councilmember, um, Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen and Councilmember West. Council, uh, Vice Mayor, go ahead. You're recognized.
So, Councilwoman Amy, you want to go first? Cause I, I need to go to bathroom now.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So, reading, um, this resolution, I was disheartened because I don't care if you're Republican or Democrat, you, you cannot use your power as an elected official to censor another, um, elected official within this dais. And it's so sad that we talk about, you know, not censoring people, yet we utilize that power and censor each other. What, what kind of example are we setting in this city of Westminster? So, as an elected official, our job is to the, do the city business and not to censor any elected official. And so that's why I feel like it's unacceptable, it's, uh, unthinkable to censor someone, because when you put this label on them falsely or accusing, I would never accuse, you know, I would never censor Menzo, Carl, Carl Menzo, uh, Councilmember, Carl, Carl, I'm sorry. Councilmember Menzo, I would never censor you. You know, I don't care what you say to me or do to me, it's not appropriate and we're colleagues. And I think it's important to have that respect on the dais, that we would never do that. And then not only that, that shows respect to the constituent, uh, our constituent as well. So we're setting that example, so that's why I wanna undo this. Our power as a council member is to do the city business, not to censor each other or anyone else. So that's my thing.
Thank you. Uh, next is, uh, Councilmember Menzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, uh, the clarification, uh, Councilmember West is not, it's a censure, not a censor. It's, it's a clearly, it's a big difference. Censor is, I mean, you're quieting, quieting somebody and not letting him speak. A censure, excuse me, city, um, city attorney, can help me, is just saying that you're, you're, you're not in agreement, you're, you know, how one, that council member's acting, not a censor, I mean, uh, quieting somebody, is that? Can you explain the difference to Councilmember West, please?
Um, yes, there is, there is that distinction. It's, uh, a censure is, is the action that the council could take to formally reprimand. It's a formal action to reprimand based on some action, words, uh, something that's occurred. Uh, the council cannot penalize other council members, but they can censure if they're unhappy with, uh, some conduct of some kind.
Thank you. Um, and just to, for the record, um, this, when this came about, this was not my item. Um, I just vote for what's on the agenda. Um, but this, this bringing back of this, um, item, it's, it's just clear that this is one of the reasons that why our city can't move forward. And it's one of, I, I just wanna ask, um, how this item, bringing back these two items of the rescinding, how does those items help our community? How, how is our community benefiting from us putting this on the agenda? Is, is kind of what I, I just, I don't understand how it's moving our city forward, how it's helping our residents. It's just to me is, I only act on what's in front of me because I'm asked to vote on this item. It's not my item, the first one wasn't my item. So it's just, to me, it's just a big waste of time.
Councilmember, are you asking me the question?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, you're, uh, order. Next is, uh, uh, Councilmember, I will come back to you, please.
Thank you. Well, I don't know how this can be your agenda when you don't understand the difference between censure and censure. So I, I would, uh, think that you want to go back and kind of redo or do some research or homework, look it up and fully understand it. Um, and I just wanna say that, um, yes, um. I just laughed there.
It's in, it's in the agenda.
Please, 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 please.
Thank you, I was just a little bit of distraction. So, um, I just wanna say that, um, yes, it is a form of, uh, severe disapproval and it was the past and at the time, uh, we as a, you know, council of, at that time, was that twenty twenty-two? Um, deliberated on it and voted on it and you weren't there. So, um, I, I would recommend that we don't bring back the, uh, but did you understand it? You obviously did not, yeah. So it's good for you to read it and then understand it also. So, I know you're grinning and you're looking at it, but I did, you just don't show any understanding. So, um, yeah.
Cause I thought you guys would read your agenda, so I don't have to say it. It's right here. I did. It's in, I agree with this agenda.
Mayor, yeah, we need to follow the process.
Yes, we have to.
Yeah, so I would say, let, you know, move along, so we don't bring back old agendas that you were not even a part of. And just for your information, when something is already in the past, it's still there. So whether you rescind or it's there. Uh, resolution is there. So by bringing it back and rescinding it doesn't help. And you're just living in the past and I think it's a little bit, um, uh, what is that, um? Um, well, anyway, so, um, you, you, you mentioned that you wanna move a ci- city forward, but your actions are not the same.
I just want to mention that.
Consistent.
I just want to mention that any council members here, if you have two, then you can bring it up. So, you know, it's, uh, we need to respect each other for that. So next, um, Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Nguyen. Okay, um, I, I listened to, uh, you know, both sides of the dais and, uh, this is my, this is my thinking. You guys talking about moving forward. And you say that, okay, we forget about the past. If we don't have the past, how can we move forward? How can we have a future or present? So you make mistake in the past and then you don't want to go back and corrected it. This is not your motion, right? Um, Council, Councilmember, um, Carlos, I mean, like your, your item. Okay, so you just vote along with it. Okay, so if this is some kind of abuse of power, when you guys have like a majority in the council, okay? And you think that you can censor any, any of your colleagues on a dais? Okay, so for example, if I want to censor you guys right now, so what's gonna happen? And you said that, go and forget about the past and that's nothing to happen. This is your chance to correct your action in the past. This is your chance to amend with the past. I thank you, Councilwoman Fan West, to brought this one up, so you have the chance to correct yourself. We cannot moving forward with a broken vehicle, with a broken city. So that's the reason that I agree with Councilwoman Fan West to brought this one up to our session. That's it.
Thank you. It's my turn. You know, I, I totally agree with you, uh, Councilmember Menzo. This was not your item. This was not your item. Look at who, who put up this item and where it is now. Okay, and I am now a mayor of the city of Westminster. There's no question about it. The voters speak louder, spoke louder during the election. Look at those people who voted to censor me. Where are they now? I cannot get that this, this is false, falsely accusation that during that time. Please. And so, I am now as a mayor for the city of Westminster. We cannot get that stain that the people who represent this, uh, this council here as a mayor having that false, falsely accusation. And I tell you that because the person who bring up this item, brought up this item before was not here right now. Okay, I, I wish, I, I wish he's, you know, he's here so that we can talk about it. So with that, I, I want to entertain the motion right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as we know, this resolu-, we, uh, we're rescinding this Resolution Number Fifty Eighty-seven containing false statement, reaching wrong conclusion and is solely intended to political target an elected official. They assert that they believe the use of censor in this manner constitute an abuse of power. So that's my statement earlier. We cannot abuse the power that the people elect us into this. So let's never, yeah, let's set a good example, basically. So I move, uh, this motion forward, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, move to approve?
Approve.
Okay, we have a, we have motion and second on the floor. We'll go for it, please.
That motion was made by Councilwoman Fan West, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen, and that is to adopt a resolution entitled the resolution. And that is to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, California, rescinding resolution number 5087, which previously censored former Vice Mayor Chi Charlie Nguyen. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Uh, before I vote, I just want to ask the council to, to use the proper terminology between the words censure and censor, because that's extremely important. Um, there's very vastly different items and you keep using the wrong word. Um, but with that being said, abstain.
Councilmember Ho?
You will?
He votes, he voted abstain.
Abstain. Was this, who's, who's agenda was this?
Well, I thought we, we talked about it already. We're moving on that.
No, no, whose agenda originally?
This was, uh, tal- Oh, again.
From last time?
Finally, was Taido.
Because I couldn't, I didn't see it mentioned here. No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries three ayes, one abstention and one no.
Next item is 5.6. Consider adoption of a resolution to rescind resolution number 5100, which previously censured former Mayor Tuita. And this item brought on by me. So I'm going to, you know, this, the resolution of 5100 was solely adopted for political reason. Believe it or not, that's my determination. It contains several inaccurate statements concerning Assemblyman Ta right now. He is Assemblyman. He is a representative for the city of Westminster. Believe it or not, could agree or disagree, he is Assemblyman. It's ultimately reaches false conclusion in which have wrongly maligned an elected official. So I feel strongly that it is important to set the record straight. And the best way is to accomplish this by rescinding this resolution. So with that, I want to open up for, um, any comments, starting with, uh, Councilmember West.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is similar to basically the, um, um, agenda earlier, uh, 5.5. And like I mentioned before, you know, for any political gain or political purposes of censoring anyone, uh, we should never abuse our power, no matter if they're Democrats, Republican, we should not do that. We should continue to use our power to move the city forward and to do the city business.
Okay, next, Councilmember Menzo.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question for City Attorney. Our previously adopted policy of item placement, um, the process, the process of placing items on the agenda, where did it, where did it say that, that the mayor can solely put items on the agenda without a second from another council member?
I think that's, I, I would defer to administration, but generally my, I do recall that we had a discussion about it. Typically, the mayor has been able to put items on the agenda, but that was not discussed the last time.
Why don't, I didn't say typically, I'm saying the, the policy that was adapted, adopted, uh, while a few minutes ago, where did it say that?
Um, I believe that, I'm asking this, okay, but I, I'm answering the question.
Let, let, let him finish.
I'm asking the, the lawyer, City Attorney and the City Clerk.
City Attorney, can you confirm this? Because I, I talked to you and, and basically you, I still have the text from you. So is it the mayor grasp, this question to have their, the right to call for the meeting? And this is, this question is along for the staff, uh, for the ACM. That they, it, it happened before and it's always that way that the mayor have the right to call for the meeting. And that's because of that, that he can, he or she can put the item on the, the agenda.
I know.
Can you confirm that, please?
First, I want to say I was still talking with, I was still talking with the City Attorney Mayor. Um, the other thing I was going to say, we're a professional governmental agency. We work off a policy, we don't work off of verbiage, verbal. So it needs to, we need to follow a written policy, not a, a verbal policy. So that's the question right now.
Actually, I actually did think about this at the time. And, uh, you know, the mayor had wanted to put it on. He was very adamant about it. I did talk to Vice Mayor, um, Namcon Nguyen, and I asked him to confirm if he would authorize that. It's not on the agenda, but he did authorize that. I, I was trying to make sure that we follow the policy, but there was this issue of the mayor typically, and especially when you have an elected mayor, um, and our prior history, you know, I, it seemed to me that that was something that typically was allowed, so I tried to cover both bases.
So we need to bring, it needs to be written that way, not just verbally that way.
Yes, I think that, and so again, that was try, why I was trying to cover both bases on this. To make sure that you, you know, it was put on, the council should have a discussion about this, but two councilmembers did authorize it.
Okay, so then just the staff report is incorrect.
The, the mayor wanted it presented this way, so that's why we did it that way. But it, again, there's no requirement that you put on the staff report that it was authorized by two. There's just the policies, it has to be approved by two. So I agree with you, we should have clarity on this and this definitely would be something for the council.
So that's what, we're going off of what you said, then on the other agenda items, um, why is there the two councilmembers mentioned on there if it's not necessary?
Again, the, the council adopted the policy and we tried to comply with it in this instance. When I spoke to the mayor about it, he felt that he should be able to put it on. And so I tried to make sure we were in compliance with what the council approved as well by.
But we're not, but we, we need, we need to, whatever the written policy is, we need to follow that. And, and if we need, if it wants to be changed, then we can change it, but.
I, I did, I did speak to.
Yes, I believe that Christian already have my approval for putting the item on the agenda.
No, that's fine. That's perfectly fine. I'm just saying that agendas, they should be written that way then.
I, I'd like to ask the ACM for your opinion, because I, I know that I spoke on it with you guys on this.
My understanding is that the city manager and Christian, our city attorney, had a conversation about this. And that there was the understanding that similar to the way that the mayor can call a meeting, that he can place an item on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with that. That's not a problem, but it needs to be written that way. The policy needs to be written that way and adopted. That's, I don't have no argument as far as what the mayor wanted to do.
With that, I, I would agree.
I don't want to, that's, that's, that's whatever you want to, whatever's written is we need to follow. That's all I'm saying.
I think it's a good idea. I think you should bring it up for the next agenda.
If it's important to you, to me, having two councilmembers, uh, base it on the agenda, that's fine. Let's just follow that. Let's just follow that process. And if you don't want to follow that process, it's written.
Done, right?
We work off a written policy.
The mayor offers, so therefore the mayor can.
No, you're not, this is, we're a professional government agency.
If you want that, um, Councilmember, um, Menzo, please put it on the agenda.
Do you understand what I'm saying? Do you understand what I'm saying? I'm saying that we need to follow the written policy.
That's why I suggest you to put on the agenda.
I don't want to put it on the agenda.
You don't want to?
Please, please, okay?
Right, you want it in a book?
I think it's a failure on our staff on this one that we need to, if we're going to follow the written process, it needs to be written.
You are not recognized right now. I, I, I would like to open for, um, Councilmember Ho.
What am I?
Want to say anything or you don't? If you don't want to.
Are we still on that same subject?
Councilmember West, please refrain from, the city attorney is not your, not your friend, he's not leading, he's not helping you run the meeting. You are, you're on your own.
If that's the case, please direct to me. If I didn't do my job, direct to me, please. Thank you. That's fine.
Okay. So distracting. All right. Thank you. I abstain.
We, we are not.
We're not voting yet. Like I told you, so distracting, all that talk over there. Okay. I'm so disturbed that we're like bringing back these old agendas that you're not even there to discuss and you have no idea what, you know, what you're talking about. And we're taking so much of, of our time, um, instead of moving the city along. That's all I have.
Councilmember, I mean Vice Mayor Nguyen.
I think this mo- this item is about the same, um, the item before it, uh, which is 5.5. And I have nothing to say with it, you know, the same thing.
Okay, at this point here, I know that everyone, uh, except me, um, you know, I, I already talked about it. You know, I think that right now, no, no matter what, he is our representative and, you know, and I, you know, we, we know how Tri is. He's very cool, he's very, you know, um, power oriented. And I don't see that, you know, he is being censured by, by this. So, you know, at this point here, I want to, I, I move to approve. Is there a second?
I second it. Okay, if you want to second it, go ahead.
Sure, I second it. Thank you.
Move to approve by Mayor Chi Charlie Nguyen and second it by, um, Councilmember West. Look forward, please.
That motion was made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded. Amy. Let me get clarification because I had two seconds and then you guys switch. Let me, who actually made the motion?
Councilmember West. And seconded by, uh, Councilmember West.
Okay. So motion made by the mayor and seconded by Councilwoman Fan West. And that is to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, California, rescinding resolution number 5100, which previously censored former Mayor Tuita. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Abstain.
Councilmember Ho?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries three with two abstentions.
For the, for city attorney, is that okay? Just really quick.
Okay.
Uh, the last, um, agenda, the 5.5, shouldn't, shouldn't, um, the mayor Chi Charlie recuse himself on that?
At, at this point here, Councilmember Ho, uh, I think that we already gone through that already. Let me test City Attorney.
I think that's a, that's a question to be asked. I think there's, there's no financial interest involved, but it does concern him, so.
He's voting for himself. How can that be legal? It's not ethical either.
Okay, you are talking about moving forward, not wasting time, but you still wasting time. You cannot take your mind off that topic.
You know, I don't know why you, you seem like you were sleeping during that time. You don't even know that we are discussing it.
We're still the same. You're like in a different year, but we're just like five minutes ago.
All right. Thank you very much. And let's move on to, uh, item eight, which is comment from the city council and agency members. I would like to, um, remind.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. We have one item that we have not addressed today.
Oh, 5.2, okay.
I, we have to move back to 5.1.
Sorry about that. My bad. 5.1, approve increase, uh, purchase order to Aqua Magic Sales Company for their purchase of sensors, water meters and repair parts for three and quarter, one inch and two inch water meters and large meters, three inch through six inches for fiscal year of 2022, 2023.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
That motion and second on the floor.
Thank you. That motion was made by Councilmember Monzo, seconded by Councilwoman Fan West. Um, and that is to approve the increase to the existing purchase order with Aqua Metric Sales Company in the amount of 150,000 for the purchase of census water meters and parts for fiscal year 2022 dash 2023. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho? Thank you. Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries Mayor 50.
Okay, um, next is comments from city council and agency members. I, uh, would like to remind those who attend the, uh, the conference, we need to report out to the public. So, um, moving on with, uh, Councilmember West.
Um, I went to two different conferences. Do you want me to address both?
Yes, please.
Okay, so can we do the vector first? Uh, do you guys have the slide?
Uh, Tanya, can you please?
Tanya.
The PowerPoint?
Thank you.
Which one would you like to start with first?
Uh, the vector?
Vector.
Uh huh.
So this is a report out, uh, the conference that you go for vector board, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it was a great experience at, uh, Disney Hotel. We were there. We drive, I guess I, I drove, uh, locally to the event. And, uh, we learn about, you know, what they're doing to make sure, uh, we reduce the cost of mosquito, the mosquitoes in the last, um, year, uh, last summer. And so they acknowledged those who were part of this, um, funding. Uh, we have John Hopkins, also Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation's part of this and much more on the screen as you see there. Different organization. Um, next slide, please. So we learned basically about, uh, there, there, are there? Oh, one that you can go back a little bit. There's, um, uh, yes. So basically the purpose, uh, of reducing the mosquitoes, uh, they were able to create this, um, genetic where they can, um, remove the gene out and put in a CA, um, into this, into the mosquito. So in that way, they reduce the malaria, uh, and taking, removing that gene out and putting a new one in. So in that way, um, they can mutate the mosquito that are existing. And the technology is phenomenal. Um, and then the next slide. Uh, so basically they have two way of doing it. One is to, uh, of course, put the new gene in. The other one is for them to feed on blood, where they can also, uh, put in the blood where, um, they won't lay eggs. So that's another way, I, I mean, with the male. So the male, when they eat it, basically, they won't. the male when, you know, get the female, you know how the biology works, male and female. So then, they won't produce those eggs. And then, it's just pretty neat that they're doing that. But also, you know, it's just whatever the public see of this, you know? But I think it's interesting how we can remove the gene and what if it's in the wrong hand and the gene can be modify and put something in there? That's my concern, I didn't get a chance to ask them about that. That's something I'll ask next, in the next meeting.
Wow, since when we having an expert in the council chamber?
Thank you. Next is Councilmember, I mean, Councilmember-
I think there was a second presentation.
You said second one, you have the second one.
Okay, so the meeting, it's phenomenal in Hollywood. We were able to meet over 300 mayors and city council. And it's unique because I know the state and federal, they want to take the power into their hands, but we want to bring power back to the local election. And so, it's phenomenal to talk to different mayors and city council and for them to figure out what the resources they have in their city. Like for example, our city, we have the well. And we need capitalize on that and know the resource we have. So in that way, when, you know, stuff hit the fan, basically, bad things happen, we know what we have in our nearby cities, so then we can capitalize that. And then, give it to the people in the city and also supply it to Orange County, people who live here. So, bringing the power back, meaning knowing the resource you have in your city and working with other nearby cities to capitalize on that success.
Okay, anything else that you want to report?
That was, that was amazing. Of course, there's other training, which I already did the sexual training from a previous, also the 1, 2, 3, 4, you know? So I've already done that with a certificate.
You've met sex with harassment.
That's what I mean, sexual harassment. And you know what I mean? It's very interesting.
All right, thank you.
You guys can report on that.
Because, thank you, Councilmember West. Next is Councilmember Manzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this past, last week, we, I was, I was very good time attending the League of California Cities up in Universal City, along with all my colleagues here on the council and city attorney and Assistant City Manager Ozeda, and our city manager Christine. It was a good time we had, I'm glad I went. And there we, I was, I took part in my AB 1, 2, 3, 4 Ethics Training and along with my AB 1, 6, 6, 1 Harassment Prevention Training. It was good networking, to meet a lot of different member, elected officials from other cities. So we really had a good time. And, and the other thing I want to report is that I was, I was glad that I went because, you know, the thing that I want to mention to the community and all the watching is that for once, and it is for once, that all of us here on this council, all of us who went, you know, we, we had a good time. We went out to dinner and we had some good conversations. And that's something that I was hoping that that was, you know, the start of something good to come, you know, that, that we all got along very well, we had a good time, we shared a meal together. We shared a drink together and that's, that's what it's all about. You know, was at once, we all had a, you know, a common goal is to be one and united and move, and truly move our city forward. But when we get off track with these different items that are on the agenda is when we lose our footing. And I just hope that going forward, we can, you know, really put the focus like we did on that Wednesday night, put the focus on being a unit and putting our city, our residents first. So that was really good to see. The other thing I want to report is that I was, I was, I'm glad I attended an event this past Saturday in Huntington Beach, Senator Janet Nguyen passed a resolution for the unveiling of Officer Nicholas Vella Memorial Highway along PCH. There was a good turnout, there was multiple city, neighboring cities, our police departments from, you know, Fountain Valley, Newport Beach, Seal Beach, along with our fire departments as well from surrounding cities. A lot of elected officials were there as well, so I'm glad there was a good attendance. It was a very moving and, and, you know, a lot of, for a lot of folks choking back tears of, we lost Officer Vella in a helicopter crash last February. So it was very, you know, sad to see that, we lose too many officers. And the one thing I want to mention, you know, like I said earlier about, you know, painting everybody with the same brush, you know, there is a lot of, you know, bad publicity that police officers get. And, and also, there's, obviously, there's, I'm for accountability and it's, and a lot of police officers are as well, as I've spoken to a lot of them here in our city. So it's not an easy job and, you know, if it was easy, everyone would do it. The other thing that I, that I saw, and I think we don't, we don't talk about enough, is that you know, when an officer is serving, it's not just the officer in uniform serving, it's their families as well, you know, their families, you know, they're, they're, you know, always having to worry about, you know, when their loved one is out in the field, you know, hopefully that they get home safe, you know? And a lot of that, you know, that part is not talked about as much as it should. But I'm glad that I went and I just want to thank everybody who was there, so. Thank you, and I just want to thank everybody that are warriors here and Terry and Michael for, and staff for, you know, hacking it out to the very end. So thank you and thank you everybody else, city attorney and staff and Assistant City Manager for your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manzo for attending the event and sharing that with us. Next, I would like to call Councilmember Ho.
Thank you very much, and I won't repeat too much of the League of California City Mayor and Council Conference. All that information I received, I had received in 2016 when I first elected. And so that was a review for me. And I also attended the AB 1, 6, 6, 1 Sexual Harassment Prevention Training as well as AB 1, 2, 3, 4 Ethics Training. I'm very thankful for the time and for the time spent there. And, you know, we receive very good information and and, you know, great resource for any time I need to go back to any of that to review. I do have the PowerPoint presentations and all that great, all the great information that was sent to us, printed out by our dear Council Secretary Lynn Duan. And I'd like to thank her for that. We very seldom remember Lynn Duan and the work that she does for the council. So, as I had promised earlier, you know, I think this is the time that we can address some of the things that we heard from the public. I just, I know that you, you all wonder, why is it that Mr. Tony Bowie comes out every single meeting to raise his concern and asking me to step down and, you know? So you probably wonder, and I know we have just two of you here, but we do have it on video. So I did ask him to stay because, you know, I, I thought he would want to hear my answers. So, I know he knows, he knows very well why, why he's been coming. And, but I, I know you don't know. So this is really the opportunity for me just to address you a little bit about that. So he came out to harass me because I did not cave in into the pressure to approve his PCN determination of PCN license. I was asking Adolfo, our ACM here. As you know, the public convenience and necessity, I guess, determination when Mr., his friend David Vo of OC Entertainment had to go up for his ABC license recently. Yes, of course, because this is my, me, my, I can say anything I like to say.
I would like to stop for a minute. Can I ask the city attorney, is it the time that we are going to into the details or should we have to agendize it?
I'm explaining.
This is a time to briefly respond on activities you've been involved in or to briefly raise issues or ask questions of staff or agendize for next meeting. That's what's in the Brown Act. So if it goes beyond that, then it should be agendized.
Well, I'm not discussing with anyone here on the council. I'm speaking to the public to let the public know why Mr. Tony Bowie. As a matter of fact, when he was here, I wanted him to stay so that I may, so he could hear my, my answer. But he almost like every single time, he would like say his little speech and then he left. So, you know, I think he, he knows very well what I'm going to say. And because I think it's fair that we let the public in on it. And so they, they should understand why Mr. Tony Bowie comes out on behalf of his best friend, David Vo from OC Entertainment. I did not cave in to, I was putting, I was being pressured to give the PCN thumbs up.
Again, we are looking back that again. I, I think that the city attorney already stated.
I am.
You can briefly say that.
I am.
You've been going on for, you know?
You interrupted me.
I, but you, you, if you want, you can agendize the item for the next meeting.
I don't need to.
Just to be clear, if she's responding to a comment that was made, that a brief comment is allowed? That would be allowed if it's questionable.
And, you know, rather than taking three minutes that, you know, Vice Mayor Nam Quan here took at an inappropriate time, I am responding, I waited until now to respond. Okay, and I don't have three pages or five pages to read from. So basically, the PCN that I was pressured into giving, I said no. And again, remember what I did last year, I think it was March, when I discovered that the beneficiary, the only person who benefited from the PCN policy, or shall I say ordinance, what was it? That we reversed and that was the, the the friends, friends of his on the council pull a fast one and got the council to think that, you know, by just making the PCN, the decision by the city manager administratively would help speed up the process and give better service to our people, to our constituents. But little did we know that it was to benefit their friends. So, this past March, I reversed it. And so when I reversed it, it's a long story, but I just want to let you know it has a lot to do with putting the pressure on me to pressure my planning commissioner, which I refuse to do because I just don't do that. I don't pressure, put pressure on my planning commissioner to approve something as important as the PCN. So when she approved, when she disapproved and she voted no, I, from that point on, that Mr. Tony Bowie came out every single time on behalf of his friend to further pressure me and to embarrass me. But you know, like I said, I also have to take the heat, just as everybody else on, on this council. So, and I understand that, you know, if you want to say something, you come say something. But many of you have asked me, why does Mr. Tony Bowie keep coming up and coming out? What happened and why? So, I promised that I would shed some light onto that so that you can, you know, rest your mind that he has a personal agenda. And it is a vendetta. So, and then in terms of resigning, I think he took that, my statement out of context. Because when I said yes, I would resign from the, from the city council if I did not get elected as mayor. Not because, I mean, if it's just that one statement alone, he took out of context and, then, then that's, that's all you hear and that's what you think. But over a course of three months, I explained to my constituents what I would do as a mayor of our city to move our city forward because for many years, many, many years, we could not move our city forward. But without going, talking about that further, I wanted to say that, I'm sorry, I just want, yes, just one more minute. Okay, because during our, my campaign, Orange County Register had made a comment which I felt was, was, it, I, I thought about it and what they said was that there was just too much bickering from, from this council. And I thought, you know, if you notice, if you call it bickering, what should I do? Should I just sit and watch them sell our four and a half acres or do whatever it is or burn our city down? No, it's not bickering. So I said, I would not sit and watch them burn our city or sell us out. And that was the reason why I said I would step out, down. However, the 6,000 people who voted for me, I have called, many of them have called, not all of them, but I didn't want to disappoint my constituents. And after listening to them pleading with me to stay on, I agreed. And I know that I don't want to be watching. And as, as you see what's going on for the last year and a month or two now, this is the very reason why I just didn't want to sit. Thank you for allowing me and the people at home. If you have any questions, please give me a call. I have a direct number, 714-643-2626. You can call me or contact Lynn Duan, Secretary of Council. Thank you. I'd be happy to have coffee and discuss with anybody about anything for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just briefly comment? Because I want to make sure that the public understands. There aren't, there, I, I'm not aware of any cases on point on this. It says briefly respond. And so what typically happens is it depends on the context. In this case, I think the amount of time that she had, she's responding to a constituent who came forward multiple, multiple times and made a number of statements. So giving her the opportunity to provide the reasons, I think, is appropriate in that situation, given multiple statements and no response. So that's, that's why, in my view, that's a brief response. Sometimes it takes three minutes, four minutes to put everything out there. That shouldn't be the general rule. As a general rule, we try to really briefly respond. But when, the council doesn't have to remain completely silent to a comment. There is, a brief response is allowed. I would think that's appropriate. Same as before, I think you were trying, Council, Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen was making a statement in response to someone who had come forward multiple times. And he was trying to make a response as to, to counter what was being said. Again, we shouldn't make that the rule. It shouldn't, every time someone gets up there, we respond. And there's this back and forth constantly, we really don't want to create that environment. But on occasion, and especially at the end of the meeting when, when we're doing council member comments, that would be the most, probably the best time to make those kinds of statements.
Mr. City Attorney, I just wanted to make it clear. I have no problem with that. What I am asking you is the topic that he's, she's talking about, whether we are, need to agendize or not. Okay, so if you tell me that this doesn't need to, then be it. Okay, next, I would like to recognize Vice Mayor Nam Quan Nguyen.
Thank you, Ms. Tanya. I would like to continue my, my response.
to the multiple verbally attack that has been going on for months. Okay, where do I start? Okay. All right, so.
Let me just say, brief is very important. If there really isn't.
I got three minutes before now. I need like about five or six minutes. She's been talking about like a 15 minutes.
If we're gonna have a lengthy discussion, it might be a good idea to agendize it. I, I, I really want, this idea of what's brief might be a good idea for the council even to say, you know,
So how about five minutes?
Set a rule or something.
I don't, I don't understand why you let, you let Castle Member Ho going, going on. She also spoke during the oral communications. Okay, twice at least. Okay. So, you know, I, I, I mean, you know, you have to be fair to every council here. If we have to extend to past 12, then we have to do it. Okay, so before you, you, you start, I'd like to make a motion to continue past midnight. Is there a second to it?
I second it.
Okay, there's a motion to, to continue the meeting past midnight. So go ahead and, and, and roll call, please.
That motion was made by Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen to continue past midnight. Councilwoman Fan West.
I.
I don't think that it's going to take that long.
The thing is that we are trying to respect our staff and those, because they have to stay afterward every time 1:30. They have to stay to 2:30, 3:30 to get everything taken care of, then go home. And then our staff have to come back to work tomorrow at seven, sometimes six in the morning to get ready. I just feel like, let's be respectful, like what we promised them is this is another way of moving the city forward. If we can't continue talking about this tonight, can we move it to the next agenda on the 22nd?
I just want to mention this, Castle Member West. This is AB 1234, and you have a chance to talk about it already. Everybody have a chance to talk about it. And I don't think it's going to take that long. And we, we need to be fair to the Vice Mayor and ask myself too. I haven't got a chance to, to report myself. And if you are waiting for the next meeting, that means I don't have the time to report it. So, you know, I, I would like to go ahead and modify my motion to continue the meeting until past midnight until 12:10.
Perfect. I motion yes. I agree. I say yes.
Wait, wait, I, I modify my motion and whoever seconded.
I second it.
Vice Mayor Nguyen was the one that seconded.
Okay, so go ahead and move.
Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, so back to you, Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Okay, first of all, I want to report on the conference, the Cal City Conference that I've been attending with our colleagues here. As Castle Member Menzo just said earlier, we have a good time together. We actually have a chance to learn a lot of new things. It's very beneficial for, for all of us. It's a a new council for, for me, and I don't know about Castle Member Fan West, but for me, it's very crucial to learn about new things. And I value the the times that the council, the whole council members, you know, sit down together, have dinner. And we had a chance to, to talk. And we have more understanding it and, you know, each other. So that's a very good start. I'm looking forward to, you know, for us to work together in the future to push the city forward. So that's about the, the conference. And now I would like to move on with that. My response. So I want to specifically direct these words toward my political opponents, both on and off the council dais. The election is over last November and you need to move on. Respect the voters when they have already spoken. When they entrusted me to represent them, I didn't write the rules, but played by them. I want fair and square. As my opponents, you have tried with your best effort to defeat me. And look, you failed. You have failed miserably. And now you come to this council to continue your losing campaigns of hate and anger. The election is long over, campaigning is done. And you need to put up or shut up. You are only hurting yourselves, thinking that you can damage me with lies, falsehood, and made up stories. Again, I know who you are and you know who you are. When you play this childish but destructive game, don't even think that you can get away with this. You will get exposed. Like it or not, I will be here for the last, for at least four years. And I will do my job. Make the city a better place to live, to work, and to raise a family. Serving our Westminster residents. Despite your destructive attempts to interfere and obstruct. Of course, the voter have seen through you, your conduct, and you will continue to fail. Look at yourself in the mirror. Or take a look at yourself on the phone. Take it out, look at it. I bet you haven't done that in a long time. Have some sense of self-respect and stop being a negative and hateful person that you are when you show up at this council every two weeks. And lastly, I want to make it very clear here that I reject. I want to make sure that you are clear. I reject all the lies and misinformation against me, being spewed out by most of you. I said it one time and once only. As I do not want to stoop to your level and have a back and forth argument over your lies and patronizing conduct to my opponents and critics. You are abusing your right to free speech and you should be ashamed of yourself. Serving this resident of Westminster is my honor. And I take my responsibilities seriously. Those who want to work with me to build the city as a better place, I welcome you as a full partners. And for those who want to tear me down and take the city with it, I will expose each and one of you for who you really are with this community. A bunch of sore losers who engage in lies, profane language, and downright, downright ugly behavior. That's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. So it's my turn. I just want to second with other, other members of council at the conference. It was very informative. I was, in 2018, I was attending the conference here in Irvine. And it is, it's great to refresh the memory and, and, you know, the training again. And for the two training that require, I also completed. So I need to, for the first training, I don't know that you guys have the, have the certificate, but for the second training, they didn't hand out for the first, they handed out for the second one. So I got the second certificate, but not the first one. So I asked the city staff to contact them and to see what, you know, get the, the certificate for each one of us.
We'll do that.
Okay, because I, I have a request from, from our secretary, which is Lindon, and I have only one of them. I don't know that you guys have two or one. You got two? Where did you get that? That's it? Oh, oh, because you, you, you weren't part of the training yesterday. Okay, so anyway, I think that I don't have that much time anymore. I just want to thank you all for coming out and speaking your mind. I thank you that you stayed until this moment. You know, I, I, I truly value it because I, that's so how you care for the, the city. You actually here to listen, whether it's going that your way or not. You are here with us. For those people who come out just for, you know, so that they can yell and scream and then enough and they go back and they, they're not, they're not willing to listen to. And I, I encourage you that if you have your chance to speak already, so wait and, you know, to have the council respond to you. I think it's fair to ask. So anyway, at this point here, I have 12:06, which we still have four minutes left. But I am going to remind you that the next regular meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 22, 2023 at 7:00 PM. So, Castle President.